All set?
Sure.
Great, okay. So it is January 21st and it is 6:02. So we will call the North Kingstown School Committee. This is meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is to recess into executive session pursuant to RIGL 42464 for discussion of any discussions of job performance, character or physical or mental health of a person or persons provided that such person or persons affected shall have been notified in advance in writing and advise that they may require that discussion to be held in open meeting pursuant to RIGL 4246A1, Certified Employee B, Certified Employee C, Certified Employee D, Certified Employee E, Certified Employee F. Sessions pertaining to potential litigation/ legal advice and collective bargaining pursuant to RIGL 42465A2, decision/ action, appeal of Certified Employee A, discipline. And that is it. Can I get a motion to go into executive?
Sub motion.
Second. Okay, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. ...
What's that?
What's up?
Okay. Okay, so we will come back from executive session and the first item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All pagers.
Erin Earl.
Here.
Robert Case.
Here.
Jennifer Lima here.
Megan Riley.
Here.
Sherry Kennedy.
Here.
Joshua Patato.
Here.
Joshua Bush.
And calendar, please.
Okay, I got a lot on here tonight. Our next two school committee meetings are Tuesday, January 28th and Tuesday, February 11th, both at 7:00 PM at Central Office. On Tuesday, February 4th, we have a budget workshop, which will be at 6:00 PM Central Office. Our advisory subcommittee meetings, we have a budget and finance advisory committee Wednesday, January 22nd, 4:30 Central Office. We have a DEI advisory subcommittee Wednesday, January 22nd, right after that, at 5:30 Central Office. Policy advisory committee Monday, February 3rd, at 4:30 Central Office. Temporary advisory subcommittee on district discipline, Monday, February 10th, at 4:30 Central Office. Health and wellness advisory committee Wednesday, February 26th, 4:30 Central Office. We have a CLAC advisory committee Wednesday, February 26th, at 6:45 at Central Office. We also have school committee office hours this Thursday, January 23rd, at 6:00 PM, and that will be here at Central Office.
Thank you. Presentations and recognitions. We have an update on MLL goal implementation in progress.
Good evening. Jody Clark, Director of Curriculum. I am here to provide you with some updates of the MLL initiatives across the district. The first thing, just to orient you, because we've had a lot of terminology change over the last few years, is that all three of these acronyms kind of are referring to the same group. So we have ESL, which is English as a Second Language, ELL, English Language Learners, and MLLs, Multilingual Learners. And again, oftentimes those terms are used interchangeably. The state right now is using MLL, but if you see those terms, it is our population of students that come to us speaking another home language, and they are learning English here, along with all their other coursework. So just a few things to orient. This was from a slide deck presented by RIDE, that Rhode Island's growing multilingual learner population has the number one growth in the nation, with the fifth highest overall MLL enrollment in the nation and the highest in New England. And it's not just in urban cores. There has been a 100% to 400% increase in MLLs over 10 years. North Kingstown was actually cited on their most recent statistics as growing 64%. You can see on these, so not just urban ring, but also districts like ours are growing in population with our MLL students, and we are working hard to meet the needs of these students that come into our district. We have lots of wonderful languages spoken for home languages with our students. Currently, right now, we have 76 active MLL students. There are 21 students that are being monitored, so after they exit, they are on a monitored list for two years. And six students that are eligible but not enrolled, that are the parents have chosen to sign them out from receiving services. I do have an additional breakdown of each of the schools. I can provide that for you. The highest concentrations are at our high school, with 19 active students, three being monitored, and two eligible but not enrolled. DMS, Davisville Middle School, has 10 active students, six monitored, and one eligible but not enrolled. And Quiddneset Elementary has 15 active students, one monitored. We do service students at all of our schools, but today we're going to focus mostly on those three schools, because they're the higher incident population schools. We have six full-time MLL teachers across the district. Again, just to orient yourself, when students come in, we do screen them and place them at a level, along with the access test that we'll be talking about today. So there are six levels, two that proficiency levels, we call them, entering and beginning, developing, expanding, bridging, and reaching. So as we talk about today's data sets, those are the qualifiers that we use for providing direct services to students. As was mentioned at the last meeting, there have been a lot of updates from RIDE recently. They are out, I believe it closed on Monday, for public comment of new regulations, so I just wanted to go over a few of the highlights. Obviously, those still need to be voted on, but this is what we're expecting, that there is a new, what they're calling a nonlinear model, for annual targets. Basically, no longer is it that you have to make a certain amount of growth each year. You have to make more growth in the earlier years of English language development, which is developmentally appropriate. Kids tend to grow faster in those early years as they're learning the language, and that growth tends to slow a little bit as they get through those stages that I just mentioned. One thing that is working is they're now giving full credit for students reaching their annual target. So the best way I can describe this is if, for instance, a student So the best way I can describe this is if, for instance, a student in year one didn't meet their annual growth target, the following year they had to make up that miss growth plus the additional year's growth. So it was quite difficult, if a student got somewhere behind, to ever make that up as we're talking about our English language proficiency target. So they now kind of have eliminated that and each year there's a certain amount of growth, you don't need to make up a miss growth from past years. The other thing is that we are now getting credit for students who are considered long-term Ls, have been in the system typically for more than five years or more, before we weren't getting credit for their growth on the state assessment, the access test, and now we are. They have expanded some of the MLL exit criteria. Now, if a student reaches a status of 4.5 to 4.7 on the access, and they have proficiency on the state ELA assessment, which is RICASSER SAT, they can exit the program. And they've added additional K criteria, which they didn't before, so that's new. And they are also now, prior to, just like with our RICASS testing and our NGSA, they require that 95%, we test 95% of our students. That is now going to become part of the accountability as well for the access testing. So, you know, we try really hard to make sure all our students take that, even the eligible but not enrolled students. We encourage parents to have them still participate in that testing so we can see where the students fall in their learning of the English language and how we can support them. All of these updates were, can be seen in the star ratings that Mr. Mezzanati presented to you last week. So those ratings are based on these new metrics. The one thing I will say, this is our trends over the last several years for, again, meeting those ELP targets on the access test. Those scores are not out yet, because they have not, what the state has not presented to us yet, are the ELP targets for last year's spring testing. So we do not have any of those metrics, but I wanted to include this to show you kind of where we stand across the way again. We are tracking the high school, Davisville, and Quid. They tend to have the threshold of over 10 students and that is what required, that is what is then used as a metric on the report card, that star rating system, so as Mr. Mezzanati again presented. Not all schools receive that as part of their report card because they don't have enough students testing. So that is why we are tracking these three schools. And you can see definitely a lot of room for growth. These are the percent of students who met that ELP target over the total number of students tested, is how that is being read. And again, once we receive those targets, individual targets, and we know what our data is telling us, we can look deeper into that and even compare ourselves with other like districts across the state to see how they're doing and reach out and ask what strategies. But for now, we don't have, we don't know, based on the new ELP targets and that language I just, on the previous slide, where our growth is. We have some indication, because obviously, great news, that the high school in Quidneset went up in their star ratings based on these new calculations, but we don't have the individual targets to give you any percentages as of right now. Any questions on that one before I move forward? The other thing that's going through right now, as I mentioned, RIDE, is just finished closing public comment on some of their new regulations, is there is going to be a big shift with the next set of regulations around how servicing occurs for MLL students. So right now, if I went back to this slide, a student that is entering or beginning at stage one and stage two, the state requirement requires three periods per day and they leave it up to the district to decide what that period means. Obviously, with our block periods, 90 minutes a day at a high school, it doesn't mean a full block, but it means some set of time that the child should receive three support services a day. For developing, it is two periods, again, as determined by the district, and for expanding and bridging, it is one period. That is now going to change, if the new regulations go through, where all students will receive one dedicated English language development period, we'll use that same terminology, and it needs to be within their level. So you wouldn't put a proficient, a beginning student with a proficient student, you would have, put your beginning students together so they're learning together, which brings up its own challenges, because in our small incident schools where we may only have five, it could be five different levels, which would require five different English language development classes. So we really need to make sure we're meeting the needs of each student at each building where they are. But the new update is going to be this integrated language and content instruction. And basically what RIDE is saying, and this hasn't become legislation yet, that they would like teachers, all teachers of content, to be teachers of ESOL, of students of learning a second language, and to know best strategies. So they are proposing additional professional development for teachers, very similar to, if you think about the Right to Read, right? We had two big initiatives where we had a proficiency level and an awareness level. Most of our teachers needed awareness, it was about 15 hours of coursework. Our elementary special ed and reading specials needed proficiency, it was about 60 hours of coursework, and they needed to add that and the district needed to track that they completed that and indicate, check that off with RIDE. This is going to be a little bit different, because what they would like is all content teachers that have, that may possibly have MLL students in their classroom to have this proficiency training. And while they haven't had a vendor and they don't know how many hours they want to have them have, almost like an additional certification, like the Right to Read proficiency level. Again, there's lots to be determined out. I just went to a meeting where they're talking about one possible vendor, but this hasn't been mandated, but I just wanted to let you know that the way we currently service, which I know in the past we do have difficulty meeting those three periods a day for our beginners and intermediates, we still do with our current staffing, but knowing this is coming down the line, it kind of changes things drastically, because now it's just not about having additional MLL teachers, it's about making sure that all of our teachers have the knowledge and go through the coursework necessary to provide this ESOL content support to the students in their classrooms.
What's the likeliness that that's going to get approved? Like, where is it, like, very?
It's pretty high.
That's how I assumed, but I don't know, I didn't know where it was.
Is there a timeline for it?
There is, I think there's a few years.
Regs are being, they're, it's in review status right now.
Right, but as far as, like, how many years will it be? I think that-
How long will it be? Probably a couple of years.
Yes, a couple of years.
I want to say 2028, but I could be totally wrong. But again, we've got to go through all the training like we did. I think Right to Read, they gave us three years, possibly four school years, to have that planned out. So this is even, to me, a bigger undertaking, because it impacts more of our teachers. So currently, the supports we have, as I mentioned last year when I presented, we did add a .5 MLL coach with our categorical funding. That coach, again, is specifically working with Quid, DMS, and NK, our higher incident population, and they are providing job embedded training. Our coach, Kim Ramos, who is also our technology coach, has an MLL certification. She is great, she's gone to a lot of additional trainings. She's going to staff meetings, she's going to common planning time with teachers, and really starting somewhat high level and going over access testing. What are the four domains in access? What is the rigor that these students have to do when they're taking these tests? How can we support them in the gen ed in all classrooms? She is doing some professional development around our ELP plans, which I'll get to in a moment, which is being very helpful. She's working one-on-one in some co-teaching situations in a moment. We were a part of a RIDE initiative and there's, we kind of have a plan. So she's really getting into those three buildings, specifically is where we're targeting, but she's also providing supports across the district. She put together some of this slide deck I'm using and we shared it with all principals, so now they're presenting this to all of the staff. So it's not just those three buildings, but in order to not water her effectiveness down too much, we placed her in those three buildings strategically, because that's where the majority of our population is, as you saw from the numbers. But she is a support to the entire district as need be and is providing lots of ways to support teachers and our MLL teachers as well in making sure that teachers understand best practices when it relates to having MLLs in their classroom. So the ELP plans. In speaking with RIDE, we are kind of really on, ahead of the game on this, so there are English language proficiency, so based on access, which has four domains, reading, writing, speaking, and listening, we have set up kind of almost like an MTSS plan specifically for our English language learners in how they're developing English and where they stand on that access test. So each student has actionable targets in that plan of how the classroom teacher can help, whether it's making sure that they're answering in complete sentences or making sure they have access to vocabulary cards that have a visual to support them in learning new vocabulary, content vocabulary. So last year, we launched this with our MLL teachers. They got in practice of writing these plans. This year, we are now releasing them, they are live in Aspen. And part of our MLL coaches' responsibilities is to go to those staff meetings and explain where they are, where they can find them in Aspen, how they can read them, what that's telling them as a classroom teacher. Because I think before, we had these great six MLL teachers across the district, but it's really everyone's responsibility and I think we needed to do a better job of letting all of our teachers know what they could do to support these students in their classrooms. So this is one step along the way, is to have these plans, put them in a common place where the right people have access and they can understand in very user-friendly terminology, where they use the WIDA, I can do statements of what the student should be working on in reading, writing, speaking, and listening, in terms of their English language development. We have also, you know, each year we kind of tighten this up a little bit more, but the guidelines around access testing, we are really trying, this year, access testing started on the 6th and goes to Valentine's Day, so we're right in the midst of it right now. It is a really intensive test and obviously, high stakes. It is a state assessment for English language development, it is part of our report card, it is part of our responsibility, we take it serious. So we are trying hard to make sure that schools are locked down, almost like a RICASSER and SAT situation, that it is state testing, please don't have announcements or fire drills or interrupt classrooms, because when a student is speaking into a computer, they have one chance. And if you run a fire drill in the middle of that, the test is shot for them. So we are really trying to spread, the MLL teachers kind of put together a list of kind of like, this is a perfect setting, and we put it out to our admin council team to make sure they were very well aware, priority of timing for testing that makes sense for kids, making sure we have accommodations in the classroom if they're being pulled, but missing classes, that they're not then held to make up that work in a way that's punitive, but really trying to support our students as they take this test and really understanding that it is a really important test. And it is, it's a lot, it's four different domains that they're being tested on. It's like four days of RICASS testing and we know how much that drains our students. So we are heightening it to the level it deserves and really making sure that all of our staff understand the importance of this and how to really lift up our MLL students and kind of give them the pat on the back they need during this long testing window to make sure they do their best on this test.
Is it, it's a four-day test as well?
It's a four-day, it's a four-day test, can be given even more than four days, it can be broken up in smaller, and it doesn't have to be consecutive four days, so just within that window. So we tend to not schedule too many things back-to-back.
Yep.
You might do speaking one week, listening the other, but it is very rigorous, yeah.
I was just thinking about the time of the class.
Yes.
Because they get hit twice, because they also take RICASS.
Correct, and we're in the middle of midterms at the high school.
Yeah, certainly, yeah.
Yep, so there's a lot of things to consider and a lot of things, we don't want to penalize these students to feel like, you know, they have to make up all the work they're missing to take this state assessment. And then in the middle, we're throwing midterms in the middle of our high school students. So we're working hard to make this something that is manageable, both for the staff, because they're giving up a lot of their planning to do consecutive times and make the schedule work for kids. The other thing I wanted to mention, and it was on our updates last year, we were a part of the RIDE ELSF, and ELSF is the English Language Success Forum. It is a national organization that is all around supporting MLL students. We met with probably 10 districts across the state. We had a team of five representatives from North Kingstown there, including two of our MLL teachers and three administrators. And we went up for four sessions, September, October, around district strategic planning specifically around MLL students. So it was a very narrow focus. We had a wonderful district strategic plan, but this was kind of like, what are we going to do to align to? We looked at the new regs and what was coming out and how are we going to get there in that time period? And what are the specific steps we can do to make sure we're providing access for all our MLL students? So that was a great process. We met with our cohort designer several times offline. Our MLL coach met with that coach, she was from California, she was a great wealth of knowledge. So we kind of soaked in all we could, learned from other districts. And we have, we have a great, really detailed plan now moving forward of a specific timeline of some of these things, both in adding the MLL coach and just in general of making sure we're in line with the state requirements. The other thing we mentioned that was on last year, but now we're in the first year of doing it, is we have additionally, with Title III funding, purchased the access model, which is an interim assessment. The one thing about the access, it's a very different test, there's nothing quite like it, it's not like RICASS, obviously with a speaking and a listening part. This allows students the opportunity, two other times throughout the year, to practice something like that. The listening is kind of listening to a story, it can be a science or a social study story, and then they have to repeat back in full sentences using the vocabulary used in the story that they heard, a summary of it. We joked, and maybe not so, but I don't know that a lot of adults could pass that sometimes. So what we are asking them to do is very different and we're trying to make sure we have regular opportunities to practice that type of speaking and listening and reading and writing. But this hopefully is going to show its value in that the students have practice and can get some immediate feedback. They're also using it as more like a teaching tool of like, how would you tackle this? And how do we get through it in a less intimidating environment, if you will? Two of the high-impact protocols, so this is some of the work we did with that ELSF cohort at RIDE, where we took two strategies that are used throughout our district, both, these two specifically are found in our WIT and Wisdom and our EL, which is our elementary and middle school ELA curriculum. One is Socratic Seminar, which I'm sure you all know, but what we did is we broke it down so that it wasn't only speaking and listening, but it also had reading and writing. So students in this protocol were practicing all four domains that are then going to be tested on the access. So our MLL coach is working with Quidneset right now to bring this in, get samples of what the work looked like, and kind of adapt this and modify before we go district-wide with this. The other one is Think, Write, Pair, Share. For those of you in teacher land, it's usually Think, Pair, Share, but we added that writing component again, so that we're getting to all four of those domains. So that's just one specific incident of how we're trying to make sure that these are common practices, not just for our MLL students, but for all students. These are great practices and bring it, using our coach and other avenues through admin council we shared with all principals, so. That is it, do you have any questions on?
Okay, thank you so much, Jody. Questions from the committee?
Thank you so much for putting this together, I appreciate the update from May. And I'm really glad to hear like the focus on, like focusing on the students and like the test scores as part of it, but more like how can we make the students feel supportive and, you know, part of the whole learning community. How have the, have the feedback from the teachers, both MLL and non-MLL, been on like the changes that have been made?
As far as some of these updates, I mean, that just trickled down. I think we shared it with the admin team in December when they started, when they really publicly released to go out for public comment, and now they're sharing at a faculty meeting, so I don't have a good sense.
So it's super new?
It is super new, I think, you know, we had talked about it anecdotally. The one thing, because, and Jen, I know you mentioned it in your question, because we were a site school for RIDE the previous two years, they had come out and done site visits, they had talked to our MLL teachers, they had talked to our admin team, and the gathering that they were doing is finding out a low incident population, because under 100 MLL students still makes us low incident. The struggles that we were having with meeting the old regulations, those three periods versus two, and what would work better. And so we were really excited to be part of that conversation, which is now, you know, the changes that are coming. But we got to be part of the initial discussion around what was and where. We were very honest, that it was very difficult across eight buildings with six staff to meet the needs of all of those students in the way that RIDE was presenting it. So, you know, that was the benefit of being a part of that initial conversation around the new regs.
Yeah, that's great, thank you for that. The two other questions, so timeline for like 2028, just rolling out, because I know that the Right to Read was not free, right? So I'm guessing this won't be either?
No, it won't. So what I will say, on a recent call I had with the state, they're offering a cohort for MLL directors, curriculum directors, and special ed directors to take, they're suggesting the AIM Institute, which is the vendor we also went with for Right to Read. So they're offering a free cohort for us to go through it and it is about, I'm going to forget, maybe 20-plus hours. It's not quite the 60 hours that Right to Read was, but they're not set on this vendor. So they're offering some free cohorts to just try, because they haven't selected the vendor. So we will be a part of that as they roll it out, so that we're kind of ahead of the game to know. They have not talked about a funding source, but we know that they are looking to increase categorical and open up those funds, which is how we were able to use categorical for our coach, which in the past hadn't always been available, because those funds- been available, because those funds increased. So, it'll be interesting to see how they weigh that. I don't know whether it will come in categorical, or it'll come in another, another way down to the states, but I mean, they certainly understand that having an unfunded, unfunded mandate, um, the only reason we were able to complete Right to Read is because we had a lot of S R funds to pay for all of that training, so.
That's my concern.
Yep.
That was my other question, was about the funding for the coach. Like, did I imagine it, or on Saturday, when they showed the formula funding, did they eliminate the categorical, roll it into the student? Remember when they showed that on the board? Anybody?
We have the MLL.
Yeah.
MLL is now part of the regular state aid.
Yeah.
So, we are still receiving.
But it'll be part of that.
They've opened up the restrictions on that a little bit, so it's, it's a little bit more broader, what you can do to spend. Before, it was only on, uh, PD, a job in, well, PD, either outside or job embedded, which is why we went with the coaching, but now they've, it's a little bit more unrestricted, which is why I think they're, they're counting it as general funding.
Does that position then need to be absorbed into the operating budget, or? Yes, and, yes, and hopefully the money will come. It, like, I haven't seen the final, like, obviously, the, the tentative budgets, but it'd be interesting to see if the budgets that the governor put forward include that money that was in the MLL lines, or it doesn't include it?
Right.
Because if it doesn't include it, then we're less, even less than what.
Yeah, that's why I just.
I also know, though, that when that, when they eased the requirements, they also made sure that we were aware that we fully needed to track and have data for however we were spending those money, so I'm sure there'll be some type of accountability, but I don't know if they're gonna remain separately listed funds as they had been in the past.
They're, they're, it's, the, the MLL is part of the regular state aid. They do point out how much you're getting for MLL, but it's not a separate categorical. They're still getting MLL funds. But it's part of, it's part of the state aid, but it's not a separate one. If you look at, if you look at what the governor released last week, it's there.
Okay, all right, thank you. Other questions? Jody, I just had one. Um, obviously, this is one of our goals, especially with it being tied to the stars, um, and all of, all of that. What's different for the students? Like, as far, can you just highlight, like, like, what you talked about is great, what we're working towards is great, but like, on a day-to-day basis, is anything different happening for them that's going to help them hit the levels that we're hoping they hit, and, and different things like that?
I think the, the addition of the interim assessment that I mentioned is a huge eye-opening, because they didn't have the experience to go through with what they were asking, and so, no matter how many times we can kind of reenact it, adding that piece, I think, is, is helpful. Um, the other thing, you know, obviously, having a coach, um, the coach is not supporting our MLL teachers, the coach is supporting our regular ed classroom teachers with best practices. So, now we have, and, and not that our MLL teachers often common plan with, um, the classroom teachers who, who the MLL students are in their room, but now we have a coach that can support all of the teachers in those three buildings with best practices around, surrounding instruction for our MLL students, which is really best practice for all students, but specifically for language development and vocabulary development of, of how best to, to achieve that. So, the PSYOP training that our teachers went to last year was all about that, so how to bring in, um, kind of active ways for students, um, their feedback was visual, auditory, kinesthetic, and tactile activities for students to learn new vocabulary, content vocabulary, and so they can participate in, in classroom as they're learning English, but participate in the content areas.
Have we implemented that yet?
We have. So, they, the, MLL teachers attended the PSYOP training, they then dispersed that with the teachers they plan with, um, and our coach also attended that training, so she is, she is familiar with those strategies as well. They have a common shared drive, uh, that they share of all of the, um, uh, strategies and, and protocols that they, that can be used, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Dr. Clark for preparing this and for all the work that she's done, um, and to thank our, our teachers, specifically our MLL teachers, and also, um, teachers throughout the district, um, for their support in this. Um, we have a long road ahead, um, but we are looking forward to continuing to do our best to support all of our learners, especially our multilingual learners.
Perfect. Thank you, yes, I would echo that. Okay, next up on the agenda is citizens' comments. Um, we have one person thus far signed up, so.
Pam Panero, seven-ten Slocombe Road. Good evening. Before I begin, I want to take a moment to celebrate the incredible efforts of our schools and educators. First, a huge shout-out to Mrs. Cirillo at Wickford Middle School for her unwavering dedication to the robotics club. Her energy and commitment have truly inspired my son, who has learned and grown so much this year. Also, I want to acknowledge the North Kingston High School. As a parent of a freshman experiencing midterms for the first time, I've been impressed by the thorough communication, detailed study guides, and extensive preparation provided by the staff. Regardless of the outcomes, the support shown to our students deserves recognition. Thank you and KHS team for fostering an environment of excellence. Now, on to the agenda, the role of subcommittee chairs. I strongly support allowing co-chairs of subcommittees to be non-school committee members. At a previous building subcommittee meeting, it was highlighted that the town manager could no longer serve as co-chair due to the policy. This restriction is counterproductive, especially for projects that are joint school and town initiatives. Why wouldn't we leverage the expertise of key stakeholders like the town manager to guide these efforts effectively? From my own experience on the wellness subcommittee, I recall when Trish Colley served as chair, she was exceptional, efficient, focused, and always ensuring we had the necessary feedback from the school side. Her leadership demonstrated that a non-school committee member could run meetings effectively while ensuring productive collaboration. This is not to discredit Sherry, who's doing a great job as chair. Instead, it highlights that subcommittees thrive when qualified, knowledgeable individuals, regardless of title, are empowered to lead. School committee members ultimately have the final say, so why limit the leadership pool when we already have an application process, ensuring capable and professional candidates? Let's prioritize expertise and collaboration over rigid policies. Code of conduct for subcommittees. I support the idea of code of conduct for subcommittee members, provided is thoughtfully designed. It must strike a balance, ensuring professionalism without deterring community members from stepping up. However, I also believe that those who sit on these subcommittees should be held to a higher standard. These positions carry a significant responsibility, and members must demonstrate respect, integrity, and a commitment to this district's goals. Subcommittees are entrusted with shaping critical recommendations, and their conduct should reflect the trust placed in them by the community. Concerned about RIDE's letter. I am deeply alarmed by the recent letter from RIDE regarding enrollment projections and the school construction application. My concerns extend beyond the letter's content to the process itself. This letter dated January sixteenth was added late to the agenda packet, making it accessible only to those who knew to keep checking. Why was it included in the original agenda packet? This lack of transparency is troubling and undermines the trust and engagement of our community. For those who may have missed it, I'd like to read an excerpt. "It is most surprising that an updated enrollment projection is not included in your vendor's scope of work. Considering that it is an essential part of the necessity of school construction application, for comparison, a similar-sized district recently obtained RIDE approval for a hundred and fifty million, and their vendor was paid three hundred and fifty thousand for a complete Stage One and Stage Two application. Inclusive of a demographic study, my understanding is that North Kingston has paid its vendor significantly more, and that the scope of services does not appear to cover all the requirements of the application. Most importantly, we are asking for supplemental information to better position the district, as our initial review of NK Stage Two dated November thirteenth revealed that the project was on track to potentially lose twenty-six million dollars in reimbursement, based on the documents. This raises serious questions. Why are we paying significantly more for services that appear incomplete, and how did we get to the point where twenty-six million in potential reimbursement is at risk? The community deserves clarity and accountability on this matter." Professional Development, RFP. Lastly, I want to address the RFP for professional development. While I recognize the importance of DEI and other critical areas of focus, we must ensure they, that every initiative aligns with the district's broader goals, particularly improving educational outcomes. With limited P days, it is essential that we consider what the administration thinks is necessary, and considering what we saw tonight, Right to Read, we lost two learning days for the entire district. You had to cut your one-eighty days to one-seventy-eight to get it all in. So, with this new legislation coming, it, that's concerning to me, and we need to really prioritize where we're spending our money. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to superintendent's report. Dr. Duba?
I only have one item for the report, um, this evening, and I just want to note, um, the Democracy Night presentations from last week at the high school. I want to thank the high school history department and, uh, Mr. Lyons for coordinating the, uh, Democracy Night, uh, with our delegates from the town, uh, family members, and, uh, other staff there, uh, to walk around and to, to, uh, view the student projects. There were, um, many different topics that were there, I'm not gonna go through all of them, um, some topics that we see year to year, some new topics. I think it's really important how the students are able to, uh, use their voice, um, and take time to research on important, important things that they, um, have interest in, and looking at how they can also help and support not just the school, but also the town and the greater community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions regarding the superintendent's report? Yeah. Okay, we'll move on to routine items. Uh, I'll disclose that there were no votes taken in today's executive session. Can I get a motion to seal the executive session minutes?
Sub moved.
Say it. Alphas in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then the, the consent agenda, does anyone want to exempt anything from the consent agenda?
D one.
Okay. Any others?
Nope.
Okay, um, can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Sub moved. Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then move on to D one, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to discuss.
Okay, do you want a second?
Second.
Dr. Duba, anything that you want to give us, um, for context on this one?
I can.
Or whomever, yeah.
Um, so, this is the, uh, this is, we're asking for, um, approval for a bid for professional design services for grant planning work for Forest Park Elementary. Um, this is submitted by Traverse Landscape Architects. Uh, this is part of the work that we're doing as part of the Learning Inside Out Grant, and, um, we're looking to, um, contract with, with a company to provide some site work, uh, for the, for the area we're looking to upgrade, uh, which is the walking bridge area behind, um, Forest Park Elementary. Um, so this, the work that they, they'd be doing would be necessary for us to be able to, um, develop the land, and hopefully, a way to improve the walking bridge, which now is really unusable, um, due to, uh, the wetlands back there. And so, um, their site work would help us be able to make a plan, uh, to improve it and upgrade it, and, and ultimately, um, improve the outdoor learning space for the students at Forest Park.
Okay, thank you. Uh, questions regarding this?
So, all of the, all of this work is actually on school-owned property? There's no, there's no question about whether it's public, or the town property, or our property, or a private individual's property?
The, the work for this particular project is school property.
There's two bridges.
There's two bridges. The one that's not on school property will not be, is not the focus here.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Yep.
Get clarity for that. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? And the, it will be completely funded out of the grant?
Correct.
Yeah, and I, can I, I just wanted to add too, it's one of the moms who got the grant at Forest Park, and she did, oh, a lot of work, so she would come to the PTL meetings all the time and keep us updated, so it's great to hear that this is actually finally coming to fruition.
Is it Hallie, Hallie Moore?
Yep, Hallie Moore. She did, she did a lot of work.
Yeah, she's been a great partner. We're excited.
So, the study is actually being paid for out of the grant as well?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Okay, or no more of the, or actually, I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second? Okay, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, moving on to reports, um, advisory, um, subcommittee reports, the first one is the Temporary Advisory Committee on District Discipline, but that one, I believe, was canceled?
Yes.
Due to core issues of, um, health and wellness advisory. Sherry?
So, uh, so we just have an update. We actually, in the last meeting, um, made a final approval on the tobacco, tobacco product use on school property, um, and it is now being sent to the Policy Subcommittee. Um, and then we also were reviewing the chemical health and student safety, alcohol and other drug use by students. Um, so, we kind of went through it the last meeting and broke it out, and, um, we redlined a bunch of stuff, and so then we're gonna kind of finalize it at the next meeting, before it goes to the Policy Subcommittee.
Great, thank you. And those are the ones that are annual ones, correct?
Yes.
Yep. Perfect. Any questions for Sherry on that one?
Nope.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business, um, item A, no motion? Any questions to discuss? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Duba? No, this is, this, oh yeah, we're just looking for an update on the chaptering, et cetera. Is this Chaz?
Yeah, Chaz is here to provide that update for us. I'm gonna laptop, just in case someone asks some very specific questions. Um, so, right now, for, um, what we're looking at for a platform change, one, we're kind of actually have two different parts to this that we have to explore, um, one of which is the one that, um, you had requested specifically about live streaming and indexing, so we're on the, for Granicus and our current system. We had that in the past, it was pretty unreliable with the current platform, so we had to exit because it was causing issues. I'm sure some of you actually may remember, um, but there's two parts to this. The first is we have to move to a new platform anyway. The current one that we're using will go end of life in September, um, so we've had that on here, we've been trying to, like, move that off, um, that one we have to go with soon, um, and we're already in the process to move that. The platform we're currently exploring is Granicus. It's one that seems to be pretty common around the area. People seem to be pretty happy with it. I know the town uses it, they're happy, and some local towns use it. So, that's where we're at with that. That one looks like the one we're landing on at the moment, seems to be the one that we've explored the most, and, or people like the most as well, not just myself, but the, uh, school committee clerks and, and others. As far as the live streaming portion, that piece, we're also gonna go with the same platform, might as well, keep it all in one. That will, uh, house live streaming, uh, the way, uh, we're currently doing it through YouTube. It'll be pretty much the same, uh, process for the most part, but it'll go in one spot. It will have the indexing, so you can click to the agenda item and show, um, kind of like how we used to have, but it'll be way more reliable than the current platform. And, um, also live, uh, closed captioning. There's a, the, the way our current one is, YouTube has closed captioning, does take some time for it to process, uh, it's usually, it's usually within about twenty-four hours, uh, sometimes faster, sometimes a little bit slower. This one can do live, uh, the delay, from what I've heard from, they advertise this within about ten to fifteen seconds. What I'm actually hearing is probably closer to about a minute. to about a minute. That's still really not bad, to be fair, for live captioning. Yeah, that's where, that's where we're at with it. So we are exploring those. We've gotten some early demos and we're in the, pretty much the staging piece. At this point right now, we're really just trying to figure out exactly which components we need, and, because we can tone it back. And what I have in the budget request right now is for our kind of worst-case scenario, if we were to use everything that we think we would use, but I, we're probably going to piece back one or two pieces that we're not realistically going to use, so.
Thank you, Chaz. Any questions regarding that?
So would the timeline be, I guess sometime before September when the other one dies?
Yeah, at the very, at the very minimum, the agenda and minutes piece, we're, we're going to have to go live in the next school year, at the, at the minimum.
Okay.
But by September. The live streaming portion, honestly, I'm trying to just piece the request all in one, because if we're doing one and, and it seems like there's a lot of requests for the live streaming and indexing portion, we might as well do it in one go. Yeah, the point, might, might as well make it and just do it all in one go. But either way, we're looking to do it at that same time. If we can do, the problem is we can't do the live streaming piece without the other piece. So it, it, we're kind of stung there. It's not like we can do it unfortunately early without basically in doing the whole platform move.
What, you mentioned the town and, and what they use as a department or division of the town. Are we able to utilize the same license that they have?
I am definitely trying to get us something right now for basically being together and being part of the same program. At the moment, we're, we haven't really explored kind of like bargaining with the price at the moment. Really, we're trying to figure out technically what we can use. But yeah, I, I'm gonna, I'm definitely gonna try. I, I don't see why we wouldn't. Essentially, at the end of the day, we're kind of one entity.
Yeah, we're definitely one entity. So, yeah.
Yeah, so like, so I would agree. So I'm going to definitely try and get us under that, because we, we've done it a lot, and I'm, I'm trying to talk to their tech director, Mike Folinger, trying to have a way more open conversation back and forth between us. So trying to see if we can get ourselves deals and cuts between each other, because why not?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't assume that there'd be no cost, but sometimes when you have a bundle and you have two different licenses or however it's tech divided, it could be a cost saving. So that's great. But you're exploring that and talking to Mike about it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions regarding this?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Chaz. Okay. Okay, next item, can I get a motion? Make a motion to discuss? Okay, give me a second.
Second.
Okay, we'll turn it over to Dr. Duba for delegate.
Thank you. So I know this was on the agenda last week, and it was asked to be put back on, so for purposes to discuss, and we have a timeline that we are going to present or review regarding professional development in the district. So Mezani has that. We also, Sally Davidson came as well to get both of them to speak upon this.
Sure. So we're looking to, this is moving forward for the rest of the school year as far as equity-based professional development. We're looking at taking a three-pronged approach. First would be providing virtual professional development options to all North Kingstown teachers, where they would be presented with a menu of asynchronous virtual training webinar sessions that are aligned to various equity topics, and teachers participating in this training will have received professional learning units for their work. We're also looking to make equity-based professional learning a significant focus of our March 20th PD Day, in which time all North Kingstown administrators, teachers and staff will take part in three hours of professional development in culturally responsive practices, which are research, which are research-based practices that use students' cultural identities and strengths to help them succeed academically, socially, and emotionally. And they also help students feel like they belong in school. Culturally responsive practices are beneficial to all students, but particularly those who are from traditionally marginalized backgrounds. The PD of this day will feature interest, interest-driven breakout sessions where staff will engage in critical discussions around topics that they choose that are all under the umbrella of culturally responsive practice. And finally, we're looking to use our Title II funds to launch North Kingstown District Equity Teams, and the work of these teams will be led by our Equity Belonging and Community Engagement Coordinator in collaboration with a local DEI consultant who has expertise and history with working with North Kingstown and our educators. Funds for this, funds will pay for the costs of this consultant work, as well as substitute teachers to cover classes for those who participate in the training. And the goal of the training is to establish site-based teams who will serve as the lead voices on culturally responsive practice in their building. This work will build on the work of the March PD Day and will be aimed at identifying school-based practices that promote equity belonging and empowerment for all students, particularly those who are traditionally marginalized in the school environment. This work will also be reflective in nature, where educators will spend time identifying practices that do not promote equity belonging and empowerment, and how we as a school can recognize and improve.
Thank you. Questions regarding the update?
Thank you for putting that together and coming back with that update. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions?
I have, I have some things that I was concerned about that I'd like to speak to, if that's okay, regarding this topic.
Yeah, yeah, it's regarding the topic.
Yep, absolutely. So I heard a lot, I've been hearing a lot, and then last week in the meeting, I heard a lot of the use of the word harm, or students are being harmed. You've heard from feedback, I'm not sure if you were referring to teachers, parents, students. To me, this is very concerning. It goes way beyond a professional development issue. If there are students who are out there who are being harmed and it's not being reported, I find that to be a problem. If it is being reported, to whom is it being reported? If it is being reported and not being acted upon, isn't that a bigger issue? If there are certain faculty members or staff members or other students in the school who are negatively affecting and harming our students, not necessarily physically, but mentally, emotionally, isn't this just a broader problem? Not specifically, although you did mention anti-racist behavior, but in general, if we have these issues, I think this goes way beyond professional development. And if it's something where you mentioned many times that students are being harmed and you're getting reports, there is a chain of command that I think it's important that we follow. There are reporting systems. We are all mandated reporters, so if topics are coming up, people are getting reports taken to them, and they are not then turning around and saying something, that violates state law right there. It violates our own policy on chain of command. So I, I can stop right there. I can keep going. I have a, a number of other things to talk about, but I would like to say that we went through three decades of secrecy and retaliation and a lot of students being harmed because a lot of people were afraid to come forward. Thankfully, we had some whistleblowers and very brave survivors come forward, and I think as a result, the district has done a huge turnaround, and I am very appreciative for that, as I'm sure many people are. But I also think that we have to realize that we have a new administration in place who is willing to listen to these students and these faculty members or school committee members, excuse me, school committee members. But if they're not getting the reports, nothing can be done. And I know it's very scary to come forward, but until people realize that nothing can be done unless you come forward, nothing's going to change. So we've had policies in place. We've had laws in place, and if this is still happening in our schools, then perhaps we need to look at the students, the faculty members who were, are being reported on. Okay, because we can professionally train them all day long, but if they're not listening, or if they continue with this negative behavior, I have three students in this district. I don't want them to be subjected to teachers who are being discriminatory in any way. And I think that we all feel the same way. So I would just like to know if there are truly real issues, and I don't deny that there are, but we have whistleblower policies, we have reporting policies, we have Title IX policies. I think that everyone should know that we should be able to use those policies without fear of retaliation anymore. I think we have a very open administration who's willing to listen to these stories, but not if they're not brought to them.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point, Megan, about obviously what you just said, but then also thinking it back and tying it to professional development of how you get that message to the teachers in a professional development setting. And so especially with the building site consultants, that might be something to tie in, because I think your points are really valid.
But I think it's also important that we realize that the school committee is the last stop. There are other chain of, there's a chain of command in place. It's policy VH, okay? So we can't just have people calling us or texting us or sending us emails and then not doing anything about it. It can't stop there. I know I've already gotten, you know, things, and you have to just say, it, it has to go through the chain of command. And that's to protect everyone. So it's very important that I, maybe the public doesn't realize that, and they probably don't, because this has been a problem in our district for years. So I think this is a good start. If we can start with professional development, if we can start with letting people know how to report issues and not fearing the retaliation that there used to be. I think that's really important for people to know. And again, we have teachers who get evaluated. If these teachers are not being evaluated properly, or if their contracts are constantly renewed, and yet they're doing the same things and, and participating in the same type of behavior, well then, that's really our fault. That's really the fault of, you know, the administration, unless they don't know that this is happening. So there needs to be better communication. I think people need to speak up if there's an issue, and let's, let's try to handle it the appropriate way and the way that's going to protect everyone.
I, I agree with you 100%. I just, I, that is already happening, so I don't want people to think that like reports are like happening and not being reported, like, and that people are not being encouraged to follow the chain of command and report to the appropriate people. But you cannot make somebody report if they don't want to.
No, absolutely, you're right. I'm just saying, if there's so much harm, I mean, this is a ser, to me, that's a serious problem.
I think daily harm is happening, and I have heard it from students, when students are in classrooms where there are racial microgressions, where people are making assumptions or statements about their genders and things like that. That's what happens.
I, I, we, this conversation has to stop.
Yeah.
We are, we are not using data and facts, and we are talking out by saying daily kids or people are being harmed. I, I, that is not a conversation to have at the school committee level. There are mechanisms in place for students, for parents, guardians, family members, community members to put in a report. We have Title IX forms that they can complete online. There are discrimination, there's general. We have received some reports this year through that, not specific on this topic. When a report comes into us, there's a mechanism how it goes through. It goes through, in two, district administrators receive it. If it's a report that's being filed at a school level, also the building administrator receives it. As soon as those reports are received by the administration, the investigation starts. We are investigating it at a high level. We go in, we grab all the facts, because it has to be facts, not opinions, and there has to be evidence. We do interviews. We interview whoever's involved in that situation. We work with our attorney. We follow up the reports. We follow up with the families. There is a lot of time spent at our level, as well as the school level, when reports come in. And then, for the most part, we've been ending with positive results as far as what's happening and how to then work with the complainants and those that are involved to mediate, or whatever else may need to happen afterwards. So there are mechanisms, and I think the public needs to know that, because when we sit here and we talk about we're harming, we're harming, we're harming, there's also things that are happening. And there are professional development that we're doing. We need to be careful with our words, and we have to stick to the facts and the data that we have. And when reports come through, we are doing what needs to happen. We are listening to people. And when someone wants to report something, they do. And if, and when information is, is provided to us, either at the school level or the district level, we are doing something with it.
I think too, to bring it back to the equity professional development topic, as on the agenda, is thinking through can maybe how we reinforce that with the staff and the teachers on like what to do. Like, I know they know, but like that could be another opportunity to add some, some layers in.
We can. I mean, we go through policies. We do trainings at the beginning of the year. And we keep talking staff, and we can't get specific at this, in a public setting about what type of reports we receive, but it, it, I, I can't.
No, no, I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to think about how we're.
We're kind of signaling staff way too much in this conversation.
Yeah, I just was thinking about how we, like, for the professional development piece, as you're teaching people about X, Y, and Z, then making sure that they understand and know like the proper things to do once, because once people know about things, which we learned with Title IX, it echoes from there. Anything else regarding equity professional development, item? Okay, great. Okay, thank you so much. Moving on to the next item, can I get a motion?
Motion to discuss.
Sorry, second. Thank you. Okay, so this is the capital improvement slash bond project. Dr. Duba?
So at the last meeting, I did put forward the request for approval of funds for us to go out and do another demographic study. Just to clarify, a demographic study of what was requested from RIDE was submitted with our Stage Two. It was done when the facility, the overall facility plan was conducted by the district. That was done in '22. So there, there was a full enrollment in there along with the demographic study. RIDE would like something more recent than what we had completed from 2022, which was part of the master facility plan. That's why they came back to us and asked to, to do that. At last week's meeting, there was discussion here about do we have to put out more money at this time to do this? A request was sent to RIDE for clarification. They did submit a letter back stating why that needs to get done. The reason for the studies, they, you know, we need something more current than what was done in 2022, which was submitted. I think also part of it is that we've gone through a few of these processes now, and as we are now, you know, have the approval with the bond and movement with RIDE. They want to see something that's more recent for us to use, looking at the projections. They're also working with us with the projections so we can get the most back in the reimbursement. Obviously, 35% is the reimbursement rate for us here in North Kingstown, and it's what you're eligible for based on the size of your building, right? So 35% is what we would get back on the majority of the capital improvement projects we have, you know, doing roofs or security vestibles, HVAC. The building a new school, your reimbursement's based on your square footage and the number of students that are going in. So they want us to do this study, so that way we can see, can we have more students be in that building as well, which then would increase the reimbursement that we get back on the new building. So we received the letter, and the letter states that we have to. I've been in communication with our OPM, and she's been in communication with the company to move forward and to have that completed.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
I have a number of questions. The first question I have is that when I was looking at the application, the Stage One application, it looks like in Stage One that was required. I mean, I have it pulled up here. I know not everybody might have it, but I'm just wondering, on page 12 of their Stage One application guidelines, it stipulates, provide comprehensive enrollment information, yada, yada, yada. The submitted projection should include a minimum of five years out, but 10 years are preferred. Whether it was in Stage One or Stage Two, I'm sorry to have to ask this, but how come our OPM didn't see it? And if it was in Stage One, how come RIDE didn't catch that? Sorry to put you on the spot, Ken.
No, no, that's okay. I don't, I, actually, if I can just pull up what was done for the demographics, because they did do an enrollment study and from the, and from flow analytics, and so that was submitted with NetStep.
Um, right, but I think RIDE's issue was that it wasn't like five years out, right? Was that the, is that the problem? It was?
Yeah, it was the, because though, I read, and I, first I wanted to say, I appreciate Mario's quick response to us. That was greatly appreciated. I know they're very busy. So I, and I appreciated that he pointed us to 4.9.2 parentheses six, because I wouldn't, that's what we were looking for, was kind of where it was written down and why, just to have a better understanding of why we were going to invest this money again in this thing. When I was reading it, it says districts must submit enrollment projections for the next five years for each grade with a brief analysis, increases, decreases from year to year, shown in the actual number percentage of how the data supports the need for the project. Totally fine. And that made sense to me. We didn't have five years because we had submitted it and whatnot. But then it went on to say, when possible, in local enrollment projections should be supported by those from outside sources such as RIDE or the New England School Development Council. And that's where I still don't quite understand this extra need. Obviously, we're moving forward because RIDE says that they would like us to, but I, I still didn't see the data on why. Like, it sounded like to me, like, when possible, local projections could be supported by outside sources such as RIDE or the New England School Development Council, which I believe is what we submitted, so.
Yeah, I had a real problem with the, the response letter, especially reading this, because if it was required to be in Stage One and they approved Stage One, I think that's an issue. Obviously, they're not here to discuss with us, so we can't really get into that, but.
Well, we have, we have an opportunity, we could respond to. That's why it's on the agenda, is to talk through kind of what our next step would be.
Yeah, I mean, I think I also would like to know, because I couldn't find the most updated Jacobs contract. I think the last one I found was like 20, December 2023. And I believe in there, they said they were going to cover the costs of everything through Stage Two.
So they're, they're, so RIDE's referring back to Perkins Eastman, the architects, not the OPM doing it. That's who they're referring to, is that the architects, why weren't they doing the study for us? And the previous study was done through flow analytics.
Okay, so truth be told, I'm just finding that out right now. So I think it's very frustrating, because I could, I would have liked to have looked more into this and just found out. I'm still trying to figure out, to be honest with you, what our Perkins Eastman contract looks like, how much we paid, how much we owe them. As you all know, I've been very involved in looking through the contracts and looking through what's going on with this bond money. I just feel like I have a lot of questions. So obviously, we, I assume have to move forward with this. Are we saying that we are going to have to cover the cost of this now? Perkins Eastman is not covering it?
Yeah, so it's not through, Perkins Eastman does not cover that, because they're, they are not doing this. So I've already.
Andrew, not to make like a mountain out of a molehill, but like, is your analysis, like, when, when that language from RIDE in that regulation, like?
That you just read.
Yeah. Do you think that, I feel like it does not cover what they're asking. Like, I know he's pointing to that, but like, is it just RIDE says we have to do it and that's kind of where it lives?
It's pretty much the latter. I mean, it's, you're fighting, you're fighting, you can't fight City Hall. I mean, RIDE's the one that's ultimately going to approve this and the reimbursements. I, I, I tend to agree with you. The language seems to give some wiggle room, but if their interpretation of that language is that we need the study, I mean, you can say no, but I think I know where that lands.
No, yeah, that's, that's where I don't want to go. I just, I obviously didn't go to law school, so it was, the language to me seemed different, but that's a link for some.
There's some flexibility in the language.
So I think going forward then, because to me, this is not wonderful at all. I think going forward, we really have to talk about, I think there should be more accessibility to documents, especially for the building subcommittee. I think had we had eyes on in addition to Perkins Eastman and Jacobs, who are working for profit, I think, I think we need more control, self-control over our project, especially now that the bond money has, the bond has passed. I think we need to get the building subcommittee members much more involved, because they're the experts on this thing. And I really think we have to have a lot more oversight. This, to me, is extremely frustrating. I think it should have been taken care of. I think if I think it should have been taken care of. I think it's in here. I think a handful of people potentially dropped the ball and I'm not trying to throw blame, but it's a lot of money. And it's a lot of trust that we ask the community to give to us and we're supposed to be good stewards. And I think going forward, we have to make sure that we are.
It just, I don't disagree with you on that. The projections were, when they were completed from flow analytics was twenty-two through twenty-seven. And so that was used in the original stage one, and then it was used again when we submitted the stage two after the.
I just feel like having guidance from someone, right? Like we, this, we're doing this. We need guidance. We're paying people to give us guidance. And we didn't get the guidance that, that's not going to be good enough. And why not? And somebody dropped the ball and I, you know, I, I just don't want to keep paying people who are maybe not giving us the proper guidance. That's concerning to me because what's going to happen going forward? Are we, is there, are there other things that are going to keep popping up? Fifteen grand here, twenty grand here, that, that's going to start to chip away.
And then that's less that we're actually able to put towards the projects that we have to do.
I would say though, that this, I don't disagree with you, Megan, but also this particular issue is because the bond failed last year. Like if we had submitted on the original timeline, we would have been in compliance with the flow analytics, correct?
It would have.
Yeah, so this is related to that.
We originally did this for the first bond.
With the timeline.
Yeah, so that makes sense while the five years.
Yeah, that's where I can, yeah, that's where I can buy it, with the five-year part.
The gap, yeah.
The, the other part I'm not going to ever buy, but that's okay.
Well, so then you have to work, you have to, you have to work with that, right? You have to be flexible. Okay, so that didn't work. So then what do we have to do now to go forward properly? And we just didn't do it. So now we have to do it going forward.
Um, Ken, to the point in the letter about the, the cost of the company that we're utilizing.
Like for our comparison, were they comparing though apples to apple? Like, you know, I mean, I feel like if you had been working on it and.
I, I just know who they were compared, I, I don't know what other company they're comparing to, what other architects.
But it also could have been a school that had their bond pass a year. You know what I mean? Like.
Yeah, I feel like that sentence is fairly.
I feel like we had a, a more crunch time when we had to redo it versus other towns that might not have. So if they're not comparing apples to apples, that wouldn't really be fair.
Well, I think that without giving us the exact comparison, it's hard to be able to just guess what he's talking about.
Yeah, I thought it was kind of a little unfair to even put that in there. Yeah, a little bit.
Yeah, he's not happy. That's very clear in this letter.
Yeah.
I, neither am I, so.
Yeah, I know. I feel like it was just a little unfair.
Yeah, well, I also, in that piece, I, I went back in my brain to think about the process that we were presented with. And this was not with the current administration. It was with the past administration or a past administration, one of the interim ones. We were presented with an RFQ, not an RFP. So we had to pick a company based on their qualifications, based on what they presented to us. It was not connected to the financial piece. And if I remember very clearly saying like, this does not, I'm, don't, I wasn't comfortable with that process. I was very, you know, and so, and the administration kind of pushed back and said, no, this is how you have to do it, like X, Y, Z. And so I just wanted to, like at least make the current committee aware that like I was very uncomfortable picking a vendor with no financial piece on it. And that was kind of the, the process at that time. And so, but I do believe that Perkins and our OPM are, are working to try to help us build the best building as possible. Perhaps we, Ken, we could have them come at some point and give an update, especially with the new committee. That could be helpful. And I also want us to be able to work through that last statement about potentially losing twenty-six million dollars, which I think is also a fairly harmful statement. I know why he wrote it, but it's also not telling the full picture. Like it's not due to negligence that we're losing twenty-six million dollars. It's the way that we're designing the building, working through the building, what we want the building to be.
Do it the square footage of the building, what the, the allowable cost is and what we're eligible for.
Yeah, which we were aware of the whole time. Like it's not, that's not, it's not that it's not, it might not happen, but we were working through what we needed.
If we're able, if we're able to put more students in the building, looking at, you know, the calculation is based on your student population and the size that they're in. It's another, or the formula of what your reimbursement will be. And that's what we're working on, how many students would actually, would we be sending from new Woodford Middle School.
But we're not losing because our plan was not put forward based on those increased enrollment numbers that they're trying to get out of us.
We're not losing, say it again?
We're not losing any reimbursement that we had planned on because, right, the, we are.
Like our projections and our numbers were all based on what we knew.
Correct.
Right, we're, we're, we're trying, you know, wanting to get the most back for our reimbursement.
Right, right, but I think like it's not money that we had planned on that we're not getting. They're just saying we could achieve more reimbursement if we.
Put more students in the building.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, well, maybe it's time to have Mario come.
Yeah, I mean, that, I mean, what it is I'm saying, I'm not sure. I don't want to say something that I don't have any answer.
Yeah, no, that's okay. But if we, maybe, I guess what I would say about this response is getting some clarification on that would be helpful because I don't want the, the public perception to be that we're losing twenty-six million dollars.
With the size of the building, we're not going to get the full hundred percent back.
Yeah, and we always knew that.
Which we knew we were working at the full hundred percent on the size of the building. We need to build, we have to, we have to design.
We're not consolidating, we're not.
That's going to meet the needs of the community. Part of that is we have a larger gym. They're saying make the gym smaller. But we want the larger gym so that way we can have a space where you can bring both middle schools together if you need to. Or if there's something going on, you have the space to use in this community. We don't want to build a building that's too small and five years later, what did you do? So there are aspects of that building that are larger. The gym is, is a larger gym. So that way it can be used and you can have more than just one school there. Like for just the Woodford Middle School. If there's an event that's happening, you know, they're both middle schools together.
But we did that deliberately, knowing we would not get full reimbursement on that part of that.
Right, we knew we wouldn't get full reimbursement on that. What we want to try to do is get as much back as possible. So with the updated enrollment study, we can also look at what the enrollments will be. There will also be an impact on Davisville Middle School. Because the more students you're putting over at Woodford, that means less you're doing at Woodford. So we are looking at like what type of renovations we're doing, what, how will spaces be used at Davisville Middle School as well. Because when they look at the reimbursements that we're going to receive back, they're looking at the Woodford Middle School as a separate reimbursement to all of the capital improvements that we're doing across the district. Because the eligibility is different for building a school, new construction versus doing the renovations that we're doing elsewhere.
All right, other questions from, thank you for that explanation, Dr. Duba. Any other questions about the RIDE response on the enrollment projections letter that we sent?
Uh, no, but can I just make a request that any documents related to the bond project that are able to be public be made public from going forward from now on, since this is the community's money? And I think that it's important for them to be able to see documents in a timely fashion, please. Thank you.
Just to clarify that, Megan, because I thought that was the expectation currently. Is there something specific that you would like the administration to get up on the school facilities project website?
Well, for instance, this stuff this evening, I, the, the letter, I think the letter from us and then the letter back from RIDE should have been up there. I just assumed that that would have been something that would have been made public before this afternoon. Because I, I don't even know if the public actually knows that it was published. And, uh, I mean, the Jacobs contract, I'd like to have published, if it's the most updated one, Perkins Eastman contract, I'd like to look through it. Things like what we've already spent on Perkins Eastman, even if it's something very, very simple, it doesn't. Sometimes honestly, the more complicated it is with the itemize, itemization of things, I just want to know how much have we spent on Perkins Eastman thus far? And how much do we have left to pay them?
Okay, I noted those.
Thank you.
And I, yeah, I'll go through and look at the website. Typically, we don't put anything up on the website until it's come to school committee first and then we'll put up on the website. But we also didn't have it attached right away because we were just waiting for it to be reviewed and then put onto the attachment. For you and public.
Thank you very much, yeah. All right, anything else question wise? So I feel like we, we, we're moving forward.
So the enrollment, like the board?
Yeah, because we had approved that if, if we had received a response pointing to over, like whatever. But then also, you know, I feel like through, through Dr. Duba, we could maybe get some clarification on those. And like I said, maybe invite Mario to come and talk about that or something. Because I do, I do want to close a loop on some of the things that he wrote in that letter. I don't want that just sitting out there and then not having some sort of official documentation or response to it from us. So I don't know, I don't think writing a letter back to him is the answer, but I think Dr. Duba getting some clarification on that would be helpful because I just don't want those two things hanging out there and having people think.
So what more clarification do you want from what I explained regarding the reimbursement cost and?
I'm just thinking of Megan, like to her point, like if you put those letters up on the website, then on the website it says we're losing twenty-six million dollars. So I want like some sort of, you know, like I feel like we need some sort of explanation of that, whether it's a memo from you to us, kind of maybe documenting it that could accompany it or something like that might be helpful. You know what I mean?
Yeah, and even the part, like ask him, like what, you were referencing another school district, but you weren't really specific.
Who are you comparing us to?
Who are you comparing us to? I, maybe he can't tell us that, but he probably, you know.
Then don't say it.
Then don't say it, right. Like I, I, I don't think it was very clear that he put that in there. Okay.
But everything's still on time schedule now? We're back on schedule and we'll be submitted by February fifteenth?
Well, we'll be submitting what we have by February fifteen. They know that the enrollment study is coming later and so we have to be able to submit that. We don't, but we've had many conversations.
Could we maybe just get it in an email saying that we're allowed to submit it post-February fifteenth? Thank you.
I'm just saying, no, yeah.
I don't want to lose out, I don't want to miss something on a technicality and have the project delayed and not be able to do things.
Well, what will happen, if we submit, if there's something else they're asking for or questions they have, we go back and forth with them and answering their questions and.
No, I get that, but I wouldn't.
It's part of the council inmate for approval.
Yep, okay. Anything else regarding the capital, the RIDE response to the enrollment projections inquiry? Can I assume that the enrollment stuff includes Jamestown as far as, or I guess it doesn't matter actually because for the high schools.
They're going to, they'll, they'll look at high school numbers and where students are coming from as far as enrollment, but.
It doesn't matter, yeah. Yeah. Who exactly started this? Okay, moving on to policies. Jen?
Uh, I will make a motion to approve JE attendance.
Isn't it a first read?
It's, it's kind of a correction. We don't need a first read. I just tried to answer, you can make the change like this.
This is the Washington County, the Kent County, yeah. You actually have in your thing that if, if it's, the change in the policy is to comply with the law, then you can make it just on the fly and that's really, that's, this is, they used to do them in Washington County. They don't do any truancy's in Washington County. They consolidate.
It's just like, we're changing, for lack of a word, a typo.
Yeah.
It's not a typo, but like, okay, okay, explain it to us. So make a motion to approve, I guess.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
So I'm bringing this policy back tonight to correct an error regarding where our truancy current actions take place. It was incorrectly listed as Washington County Courthouse, but it should be Kent County. And I'd like to thank the district's truancy officer for bringing this to our attention. So at this time, I'm recommending approval of this revised policy.
She's like, I have to drive north, not south. Any questions regarding this?
Nope.
Okay, thank you to her for catching that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then the second one?
I'm just going to start making motions for discussion because it seems like we're getting tangled up when I make the motion to.
No, 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 it's fine. It was just the first read that tangled me.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve McKinney-Bento.
Second.
So this says second read of revisions, but it's actually the second read of a new policy, which is aligned with the Federal McKinney-Bento Homeless Assistance Act to ensure that children and youth who are experiencing housing instability have equal access to the same educational opportunities as other children and youth in the district. There's been no changes since we discussed it at the last meeting, so at this time I'm recommending approval.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Moving on to new business. Can I get a motion for, I made, please, make a motion to discuss?
Second.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Duba.
So this agenda item was put on here to, for the school committee members to have a discussion. And we bring forward to us if anything that they would like us to consider as we're putting the budget together for FY twenty-six.
Yep, and full disclosure, it is our attempt to kick off the budget conversation. The official budget conversation doesn't start till next week, but we thought, because of the way that the schedule rolls out and where we are, that this might be a productive, since we had the meeting today anyways, it'd be a productive kickoff. But the administration's like first official presentation to us will happen at the next meeting. So Dr. Duba, do you want to, are there two different items?
Yeah, there are two different items. Might make sense for you, A, if we're A.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, I mean, that way I can go over what the key budget drivers are and then if there's anything else you can add to, if there's anything.
Yeah, does that make sense?
Other things that you may have.
Yeah, so can I get a motion?
That you want us to consider.
Yeah, so let's flip them. So can I get a motion to move item B to be first and then A will be second?
I'll motion to move B first.
Second. Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll turn it over. Dr. Duba to give the presentation and that'll give us some more context. So we're not repeating things and having him just say that's in the presentation.
Let's get up over here.
All right, so the, the purpose of this presentation is to go over key budget drivers prior to our budget review next week. And it's just big picture, not getting into financial numbers. That'll be part of the presentation that I'll do with our finance director next Tuesday. Just overview of the district with, for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, which is which we are in right now. The budget for this year is eighty million, thirty-two thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars. The enrollment numbers that we have here, that was, that was from the October one. So total enrollment from the October twenty-four census is three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven students. You can see that there is a breakdown below for each area level of school. So preschool through fifth grade, we had one thousand, six hundred and fifty-five students. Middle school, sixth through eighth grade, eight hundred and twenty students. High school, which is ninth grade through twelfth, one thousand, three hundred and twelve students. We have twenty-five students alternative learning placements and seventeen students that are out of district. Alternative learning, that would also include like students that might be at Davisville Academy or other programs.
Can you just clarify the differences between those two?
Yeah, so out of district would might, would also be students that are in CTE programs that are not at the high school. Of those.
Sorry, would alternate learning placements count for like CCRI? No, they're counted for high school students.
Yeah, they're still part of the high school.
Thank you.
Alternative learning, that would be for different special education programs or GED.
Thank you.
So for percentage of free and reduced, of that number, twenty-six point five percent of the students receive free or reduced lunch. Twenty-two point eight percent are students who receive special education services and two point five percent are students that are multilingual learners. These are our projections for next year, for the twenty-five, twenty-six year. There is a, a drop in, and I'll get, I'll go through that on the next slide. There will, we are seeing a drop in enrollment for the next school year. But these are, I'm not going to go through each grade level, but you can see how many students we're, we're projecting preschool through twelfth grade. Enrollment staffing impacts. So enrollment in preschool increased slightly in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We are seeing that increase again. I had mentioned once before that we do have an increase around early intervention. Students coming through child outreach as well as preschool with students with special needs and needing to look at programming for next year. This year, we had new classrooms that we put in place across the district. We had a additional kindergarten classroom at Stony Lane. We had a Compass K, which is a special education program that we added at Stony Lane. So that was in addition, we are seeing, you know, these, some of these programs needing to continue to next year, which I'll get into. We will be at max capacity for preschool and kindergarten going into next year, looking at our numbers. Meaning that we are, you know, those, even though there's a, the enrollment is going down, we're not seeing that at the early childhood level. We also, looking at, at the projections, know that grade five at Fishing Cove and grade three at Forest Park, we can expect those grade levels, those classrooms to be at capacity. So all this we're going to, we're also considering as we're looking at how we're doing some redistricting throughout the district and looking at the projections. When we do our projections, we always bring our students back to their home school. Meaning parents, family members may make a request to send their child to a different school. At the start of the new school year, we bring them in our computer back into their home school so we can see exactly how many students are districted for that school. so we can see exactly how many students are districted for that school.
Ken, does, with the extra grade five and the extra grade three, would, or like that, would, we, like four, like four and two are big right now?
Yeah, so we're not saying that there's gonna be extra. We're just saying that looking at the number of students, we're gonna be at that, that capacity of how many students we can have at that grade level at those schools.
Got it.
Is that capacity based on facilities or capacity based on contractors?
So it's based on contractual numbers, but also how many classrooms, how many available rooms we have in the school, of how many fifth grade classrooms we can have and how many third grade classrooms.
Thank you.
So this year, we had three thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven students. We're projecting next year to have three thousand seven hundred and three, so it's a two point two decrease in enrollment. We are going to have, looking at how we're going to continue the, the special education programming across the district and, and different enhancements that we need to do. It's that we were meeting the needs of our students and also looking at the programs and how the programs have continuums from preschool through twelfth grade. We also need to note that with ESAR ending, the grant funding has ended. We had positions that were in the budget that were, that were paid through ESAR that moved into general budget as well, so that'll be an impact on the budget as we move forward. So key budget drivers. So these are, these are specific items that we know will have an impact on the budget and increases that you'll see when we do the presentation next week. So salary increases. We have two contract negotiations that we are doing right now. One, one negotiation is with ESP, which is our educational support personnel. So that is a current negotiation we have. We know that with the NEANK and admin contracts, we can expect a three percent increase for next year. Those contracts are not being negotiated at this time. Those are already in place. Pension, employee retirement system is, will be at fifteen point one, ten percent, so it's a two point nine percent decrease from last year. And the municipal employee retirement system is down point eight three three percent. I'm sorry, it's up by point eight three three percent. Health insurance, we are budgeting an increase of six and a half percent, and that's based on percent changes from this past year. For transportation, we are in contract negotiations with our North Kingstown Bus Contract Association, so that will be an impact on our budget as we move forward. We're also looking at necessary fleet upgrades. And we will be budgeting for summer school, bus transportation, as well as the late busing, late bus for next year. We also are looking to budget so we can install safety cameras on our school buses. For out-of-district tuitions, these are, this, this one right here is particular to our students that are in special education programs that are out of district. We are anticipating an increase in tuitions anywhere from one and a half to two percent. We know that our grant funds through ESAR has ended, so there will be expenses that we have that we need to be putting in the budget that were covered through ESAR in the past, for example, summer school, how we purchase our high-quality curriculum materials, as well as technology purchases. We also had psychologists in there as well. We don't know what our allocation will be yet for the CRP. We always look at that as possibly being level funded. CRP is the Consolidated Resource Plan. That is the, that is how we receive our state funding for specific grants that come from the federal government, and that's for Title One or Title Two, Title Three in IDA. Title One is, is grant funds that we receive to put programs in place for economically disadvantaged students. Title Two is for professional development. Title Three would be for supporting our population of students that are multi-language learners, and then IDA is the special education grant. We're also doing some redistricting for next year, so there could be potential budget increases based on that if there is any additional staffing or furniture needs in classrooms. We will be making those recommendations and, and looking at neighborhoods of students that will be moving from school A to school B, I'm being nonspecific right now, but also keeping in mind as students, looking at groups of students by grade levels. So it's, it's a potential impact on staffing, but overall, if we have the same number of students, we should have the same number of teachers. For technology, there are critical replacements needed for computers, laptops. This cycle is for administration. Every, every year, it's a different group of computers that are for different staff members. We also have the cycle for technology refurbishment at different levels for students. So the five-year technology plan is for grades one, six, and nine to replace. We are looking at a lease of technology instead of buying it out to, just to compare the prices. For facilities, there's a, we are looking at replacement of some vehicles, as well as equipment upgrades that are needed. We are looking at a cycle for vehicle replacements, so it's not happening all at once, but over the next three or say four years, what vehicles need to be replaced within our facility department. Also for school safety enhancements, we are looking at ways that we can have additional devices or, let's say, technology that we're using that would help us with our safety procedures. So for example, a visitor badge management system that is consistent in all buildings, as well as an emergency management system. So those would be budget impacts. Those are something new that we're looking at. In our finance office, we are looking at the possibility of an additional staff member for payroll coordinator, just to assist with what is happening as far as management and all and workload within the finance department. And then for administration, we'll need to be looking at an updated lease for this building here for the Ramonovinier Admin Office, so that could be potential. There will be a budget impact, but we need to see what that lease amount will be. They have to, the last time the lease was updated was in two thousand fifteen, so we're anticipating that, that lease will look different. We're, we're, we're waiting on that. Okay, educational programming recommendations. So the reason why we're looking for a new lease for this building, I know I, last year said that I would, my goal was to get us out of here, so we're not paying a lease and for us to go to Davisville Academy where there's open space. However, what we're seeing is there is a need to keep that building as a school and to use that for programming in the district. It would be not in our best interest to turn that into office space when there is a need in the district for that to be used for program space. So we are looking at making a recommendation for the preschool to, in general, early child, an early child expansion of early childhood programs to be moved to Davisville. They were there once before. The classrooms are suited for the needs of preschool, meaning like there are bathrooms in the classrooms and bathrooms near, near those locations. That means we would be moving five, currently five classrooms out of Fishing Cove over to Davisville Academy. That would open up five more spaces at Fishing Cove to be used. And there are other special education program needs that we are looking at as potentials for next year. Obviously, looking at the budget, we have to see what we can do, but also looking at the needs of students and populations that are coming in. So in no, in, in projecting out a move of the preschool program to Davisville Academy, we know that there will be a financial impact on moving furniture. It'd be our responsibility to move furniture, move all of the teaching materials, and we also need to look at the installation of a developmentally appropriate playground if they're going to go there. They will need that. So we look at funding that we may have currently in, in this year's budget, as well as what we might need to put in for next year in order for that to happen. There's also a possible plan of adding a momentum ABA, pre-K clinic, ABAs, Applied Behavior Analysis, for students exiting early intervention and going into our preschool program for early childhood. That is something that Dr. Santa is looking at. It would also be an insurance-based service, so it would be housed at Davisville for the students that are there, but it would also be covered through the individual families' insurance for a program like that. We're still investigating and looking into it, but it would be another possible expansion for early childhood. At the elementary level, as I stated, moving the preschool out of Fishing Cove to Davisville Academy, it opens up five classroom spaces. One space would be used for the Positive Pathway Program, which is grades three, I'm sorry. That should say grades one and two, not three, three through five.
Some grades.
It is grades. I know, I'm looking at that now, and I'm trying to remember what grade's currently there, so it, I, I might have, I might have put three through five. I think, I think it's one through two. Is it two through five?
Three through five.
It's two through five.
Thank you. It is two through five. I am correct. Thank you. So. So moving the grades three through five program from Davisville Academy to Fishing Cove, because our plan is to have those programs back in the public, you know, the public school setting, so they are, be able to mainstream, be integrated with typical peers. As, if you remember, we moved one program out this past year. And so now we'll be moving the other program over to Fishing Cove. In addition to that, Dr. Santa is also looking at having a K program, so there would be grades K through five at Fishing Cove for Positive Pathways. So that would be an impact on staffing, some staffing that's with the current program at Davisville Academy would move with the program, but also looking at if we're adding another class, that, that would be an increase for staffing for a teacher and, and teacher assistants. We then have three other general education classrooms that are open. So as we're looking at redistricting and shifting neighborhoods from the south to the north, you know, meaning from Hamilton down to Fishing Cove, that would give us three more spaces at Fishing Cove to be able to use for other grade levels, might be first, second, third, depending on student population. Do a note there regarding the redistricting committee that will be making a recommendation on how we're shifting some neighborhoods to go from Hamilton to Fishing Cove and also looking at how others, neighborhoods might be from Fishing Cove and Forest Park would be going to Quineset. And then there's also, you know, was a request for additional teacher assistance at Fishing Cove and Hamilton based on size of the school, but also knowing that those schools have additional special education programming and having additional TAs for safety reasons for next year. For district multi-tier assistance of support, we are looking at possible need for additional services, and we're evaluating that right now as requested being made to increase mental health staffing and interventionist. At the secondary level, at Wakeford Middle School, a possible addition of an intensive resource program there for grades seven and eight. At Davisville Middle School, maintaining the Bridges Plus Program for seventh and eighth grade. And then at the high school, additional, an additional special education teacher for transition program and a teacher assistant for Project Search. So I know Dr. Santa presented that to you previously, so that's a possibility as well. Any questions? I'm gonna go sit down to have further discussion, but that's.
And remember, questions could be emailed to Dr. Duba.
Yes.
And this is also very kindly a preview for next week, just, just remembering about the level that we want to get into it right now, et cetera. But thank you so much, Ken, for, that was actually more than I thought. I really appreciate the quick turnaround.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a quick question now? Oh, yeah, we can ask, we can talk, and we can ask questions, and then the next item is school committee priorities and things that we want to see. It's not, I'm not trying to stifle discussion. I just don't want us.
We don't have to get to weeds.
The expectation was not the weeds, because Ken was not supposed to, exactly.
I'm gonna go high level here.
We'll get weeds, don't worry, but yeah.
So forgive my ignorance, but having not been through this process before on this side of the table, when you present your budget, will you also be presenting it with your recommendations with some sort of priority list level, like, kind of like we did with the CIP projects, level one, two, three?
Yeah, so typically, what we will do is we will take the requests that we get from the schools, and then my practice has been, we did this last year, I'll sit down with our, last year was with the controller and other administrative, finance director, and look and say, okay, what is reasonable, right? So we ask for requests, right, and we always want to go back and say, okay, well, where are the needs coming from? What can we reasonably put in for this year? So what I'm sharing with you are some of those requests, some of those ideas of what we'd like to see. Leslie is actually working on the budget right now as we speak. I've met with her today and for hours, and we have a budget finance advisory committee tomorrow of, you know, the budget finance advisory committee's gonna review what we're presenting and putting together, and it'll, it'll be some of the wishes and the wants. And I, and after that, from what will happen is we'll be looking at and saying, okay, what are we actually going to put into the superintendent's budget? That goes to the school committee, that then becomes the school committee's budget, but making sure that we're presenting a fiscally responsible budget with what we know needs to happen for next year. Sometimes we may have to tier what some of those requests may be and say, well, maybe I'll do it for FY twenty-six, so this may have to be FY twenty-seven.
Okay. Did that answer your question about priority list, Megan, or is?
Yeah, because I was just thinking about things like.
Say, you know, let's put everything in there, but we know that's not a waste of time.
I was just thinking, for instance, things like furniture, which I understand furniture for specific needs, I get that, but then versus teachers or school psychologists, school, you know, like faculty members. To me, there might be a, a big difference in priorities, so I was just wondering what the recommendations would be, but, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
I have two quick ones, and I'll save the rest of mine for tomorrow. The, a lot of, thank you for putting this together. A lot of this educational programming seems to be all special education oriented. Is that, is there no new educational programming requirements for non-special ed students, or it hasn't just not been put together yet?
So right now I have what, what you're seeing, and even, you know, when you think of the multi-tiered systems of support, that would be regular education, right? I was more specific on the special ed end because I had that, like, you mean like knowing, like, this is exactly what we have.
You've got some big drivers that you knew about.
Because it's based on specific needs, it's IEP-driven, versus looking at the MTS end of where those requests are coming in from of, of, you know, maybe, you know, additional interventionist at certain buildings. They're not driven specifically from student needs. They're saying this is how the program needs to work. And that is, is what is specifically needed for the program, and we have a little bit more flexibility of how we put the other programs together for MTSS, which would be for regular education programs.
Okay.
Is that what you were, is that your question, or what, what is your?
Well, it was more like, is, is, is this a complete picture of your, like, educational programming needs and desires, or is it just represent the snippet that you've received so far?
I would say that is where we're at right now.
Okay.
I mean, obviously with the redistricting, that might look a little different, so.
Okay.
But there's nothing new that might, I know we went through like the program, I studied at the high school and talked about like new program, like what's happening there. I mean, all of that would be part of the budget as well.
Yeah, like any staffing to support that, any positions that have been grant-funded and no longer grant-funded, anything like that.
I mean, all that would be part of the, the budget.
Okay, but it's not reflected here, but may show up in the budget. Okay, that's kind of where I was going. And then my other question is, I don't, I didn't remember that you went over here, this is in a packet. Can we get a list of charter schools and how many students go to which district?
Yes.
Okay. That was my question.
So not which district, but which char, like what charter schools are we paying tuition to?
Yeah, and how many students?
Yeah.
And can we also get the, the transportation impact of what that costs us to transport kids?
For.
To charter schools and other things?
Yes, and we don't transport to all of the.
We all wish the same training this year.
Not all of those are transported, but we, I can get that put down for you.
But could they be transported, they just don't take advantage of it?
It could be. I can, we can, let me, let me, let me grab it and see.
I'll, I'll do it in a cannon that we can, we can, I can, I can give you the lowdown on what they were talking about and what, what information might come up.
Probably part B of your question is, can we get a list of how much we're transporting to private schools also?
I guess for, for my kind of preliminary high-level questions. Um, I guess, for, for my kind of preliminary high-level questions, for the pre-K program, I totally understand that, and I, we heard Dr. Santa come and talk about, like, the extreme need, and all of those sort of things. One thing that I just wanted to bring up is the growth that I want to see in, in the plan, and what I mean by that is, you know, I know that we've had to shift some of the spaces to special education students that we usually, that we used to be able to have with the partner students, we've decreased, we've actually decreased our pre-K enrollment in some ways, and I understand that, but long-term-
Like, how do we increase the spaces for typical pairs?
Yeah, and like, long-term, if the state comes down and says, everybody needs pre-K, right?
And part of-
How do we work that into a plan so that we're not then panicked and scrambling and moving from DA somewhere else? You know, like, I want us to plan for the most, knowing, you know, and whatever they give out.
And part of that plan of moving there, we know that we have the ability to expand within that building and classroom space to add more classrooms when we are able to do so.
Yes, I just wanted to bring that up from a high-level perspective, and then I also wanted to bring up summer school. I know you mentioned that, and the SRF funding, and, and those sort of things, but really hoping to get some information about, like, not just what we have been able to do, but maybe what it should be, and what students should be, you know, like, like, I know we, you understand, Rob, so just kind of thinking that through, and, and looking at that from a budget impact standpoint. And then the last comment I would just make is, I really strongly believe that a budget equals what we believe in and what we're working towards, and so just making sure that you circle back to the district goals from this year, and see if there's anything, you know, like, like, that should be the driver, in my opinion, of things that would be added to the budget, and although the things that you presented today are really worthy, they're actually not in your goals whatsoever, like, as far as, like, what we're-
I would disagree that the special education program would need to be part of how we're enhancing the district.
Yeah, so maybe it would hit one line of some of the quantitative things, you know, yes and no, but, just trying to think through and looking at all of those different tiers to just make sure, not that everything will get hit, but just thinking about those pieces, because if we're not funding them, they're never going to happen. And that might be okay, and they'll fall off for next year, but I just wanted to bring that back from a high level. Other questions? Josh, any questions from you? Okay. Cool. So, have fun at Budget Advisory tomorrow, we'll see you next week. And then if people do have any questions or thoughts, definitely, you know, letting the administration know in advance, I think, is really helpful, and can help inform kind of those conversations, both at the workshop level and whatnot, so if people think of things, just send them to you. And also remember that things take time, and that Leslie is one delightful human. No, like, you know, like, we're gonna, we're gonna get in and dig in and want some things, but just having some patience on the, the response on that, because it's a lot to pull some of the requests, but also really important, so. Okay. Anything else there? Okay, let's move on to item C. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to discuss?
Second.
Okay. I guess Ken or Jen, you're both, just, can somebody give some context to the committee about this one?
Sure, I can. So back in June, we actually, as a committee, had asked for this issue, which we had informed and been talking about for a while, to be addressed. At the time, we had just created the Budget and Finance Committee at the time, so we referred it to there, so that was in June. That committee didn't meet until October, it didn't get put on the agenda for the first meeting, finally got put on the agenda for the second meeting. At that meeting, the Budget and Finance Committee agreed that even though we are in contract with ESP currently, in terms of trying to do something about their wages for the next contract, that we would look at doing some type of incentive program currently, and so that is now being brought forward to the school committee for approval.
Okay, so can you-
What we discussed in the Budget and Advisory Committee was some type of referral bonus for employees in the ESP and bus monitors who are not part of the ESP, like, if I say, hey, you want to come work here, it's fabulous, and you come, and then you stay for six months, I would get the employee, I would get the one that-
Like, if you find a friend-
Right, that way, we're not, we're not incenting, like, a new employee, then they're paying more, or even just, like, things, like, having, like, a monthly drawing for a gift card, or something, just to show some type of appreciation, with the understanding that we are working on the contract and trying to do something long-term, this is just something short-term to show that we value them and the work that they're doing.
Where does that money come from?
That's the question.
Oh. And I do, when it says for incentives, there's a difference between, like, morale stuff and incentives for hiring, and so Jen, just to clarify, the recommendation from the committee, is this, what, part of the issue was, we were not able to fill spots for bus drivers, for bus monitors, and for TAs, right, and that's what we were talking about, and so is the recommendation from the Budget and Finance Advisory Committee all connected to hiring, like, helping, or, I'm just sorry, I'm confused about-
The recommendation coming out of the advisory was two things, not to do a hiring incentive for new employees, but to do a referral incentive for existing employees, where if you make a referral, and that person stays for certain, you know, obviously the details have to be hashed out, then the employee who makes the recommendation will get some type of a referral bonus. And then the other thing was just maybe doing some type of, just like you said, like, goodwill, good spirit, like, you know, drawing once a month for a $25 gift card.
Or attention, then.
Yeah, right, some.
Doctor-
Okay, so-
Did you think of an amount that you'd want to give them for the referral bonus?
No, we just said that we wanted to consider it, and then move it up here to be discussed.
Okay, so Dr. Duvva, as far as, had a receipt on this one, any thoughts from the administration on the recommendation from the Budget and Finance Advisory Committee, which I know you also sit on, but like, you know, like, what are kind of, I guess, you're, as superintendent, your thoughts on this, and then, for me, I would want to, if, if the committee's in favor of the recommendation, if Dr. Duvva's in favor of the recommendation, I would want it to go to the person that I just said had a lot of work to do, and we have to be patient with, to get the fiscal impact, before I would support, you know, like, I would want some information about if we did something like this, what would the fiscal impact be? But I would also, first, I'd like to hear Dr. Duvva's kind of thoughts on that.
So, you know, this is a conversation that I've had with our HR director as well, as far as having a referral incentive program for current employees, so that way, if it's a current employee that refers someone to come in here and to accept a job as a teacher assistant, or a bus driver, they would get some type of a financial incentive for that. We are in support of doing something like that, we think that could help increase employment here, as well as retain our current employees. So we, you know, that's something that we would be interested in doing, if this is something the school committee is saying yes, we want you to move forward on, we will see what that financial impact will be, and what that dollar amount will be as well.
One concern I have on it, although I'm supportive of the concept, the bus drivers are not our employees, they are, either they own the buses, or they're kind of like subcontractors, for lack of a better word, and so that is a piece that just concerns me, because it's not the same as bus monitors or TAs, so just wanted to bring that up.
Or were you talking about the bus drivers of the mini-buses?
Oh, maybe.
Our employees, right? Are they, are they under the union contract, right?
Yeah, I think we need to call out who we're talking about.
We do have some bus drivers, right, and it could also be that it's another employee that is making that referral for a bus driver to come on.
Oh, because it could be another employee of the school department.
Yeah, so I think, just clarifying the who, like, is it just the mini, is it just the bus drivers that we employ, like, I, like, working those details out, I think, would be important.
Yeah, another thing I would do, too, if, they'd have to stay a certain, like, six months, like, not-
Yeah, oh, yeah, it wasn't like you got hired, and then you'd be the next day.
We would need some criteria, not just-
Yeah, I know, but, yeah.
Before we, we get too deep into this, Andrew, any thoughts from, or can we get, yeah, on the spot, but just, I don't want Ken to go do all this work, and then have you come back and be like, no, that violates the union contract, or no, that, like, you know, like, that, there's some things there, so if we can work through that.
I'd want to look at that, I would want, I would want to look at the, not so much the, the drawing thing, but I, I would want to look at the referral.
Yeah, so my recommendation would be, maybe, first step is that, because I don't want Leslie to be pulling numbers and Ken to be doing work, if, like, union-wise, it's probably not gonna fly, so does the committee feel like-
Yeah, no, I agree, because I feel like, if you're thinking it's just another TA doing it, or another bus monitor, it's different, but I know what you're saying, like, if it's an hour teacher, or-
Yeah, I mean, my concern is that we, the school department would be paying a, a union member potentially for a service, so is that something that would have to be negotiated? Now, I don't, I, I think arguably, it's not a service, it's just a referral.
Negotiated or claimed.
Yeah, I just, I just want, I would like to explore that a little further, before you put a bunch of time into it, that's all.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's the first step.
So-
So just, the only thing that I want to just call to, we started talking about this back in, like, almost a year ago, at this point, so, like, by the time we get to this, our contract is going to be negotiated, and I just, like, if we could just expedite this, because the whole point of doing this was to express our appreciation, and-
Do we have a bigger issue with bus monitors that, versus the bus assistants? And I'm only asking this because, like, right now, the bus monitors, because they went up to $15, but the bus assistants are making more an hour, so if you're gonna pick one of those jobs, which is basically, right, the same qualifications, you're probably not gonna want the bus monitor job making less money.
Um-
So I, I don't know if, like, the money we would defer referrals-
That's not this, though, yeah. I see, I see what you're saying, but-
You know, I don't know, I was just wondering if that was why we have more openings on bus monitors versus-
Bus assistants.
Bus assistants.
I don't know if, if that's true or not true, honestly. I, I'm not looking for an answer, I don't know where I'm looking at you.
Yeah, it was just sort of, like, a thought.
As far as to Jen's timing point, Andrew, do you think it would be reasonable to maybe have some information by next week?
Absolutely, I'll, I'll make a call tomorrow, and just see what, at least their initial impressions, if they may say they have no issue with it at all, in which case, you know, we can move forward, if they say they share any concern, we'll just do a little bit of research.
You can check both unions.
Yeah.
And, what was it? Nope, it is completely on, and, all right, it'll come, probably the next time they're done with it. Any other thoughts on this?
Is there an easy way to find out what other districts do?
That's what, that's what it was. That's what it was, I was saying, ask the union if they know of any other districts to do something similar.
Yep.
You look like you're finding a friend, are you finding, is it bad?
I'm just trying to tell them I can leave.
Oh. I can leave. It wasn't just that you were trying to figure out if they knew a district, I don't know. Yes, of course, your staff is, you most certainly are welcome to stay if you're enjoying the show, or go home and watch it at your leisure.
Not you, Joanie.
Okay, any other questions, comments regarding this agenda item? And Jen, I do hear your frustration on the timing, I think it, there's a variety of factors there, and like, but now it's here, and we have the recommendation, and we can go from there, so. Okay, moving on to the next item.
I make a motion to discuss?
Second.
And so, this item is on, again, kind of preview energy, so the school committee calendar by statute has to be looked at every January to get set, and so right now, we have gone all the way to the end of the school year, but I believe, Jen just made a face, I thought I was confident in that statement.
We went through, yeah.
June 17.
Till June, right? Yeah, and then, so, by law, we have to do August, September, October, November, December, for the next, like, to be in compliance with what we need to do by the end of January, but from history, I've noticed that when we put it on the last meeting of January, we usually then get stuck, and then we're in February, and so I just wanted to put this on initially to get the school committee's kind of thoughts on just maybe some big-picture things, if there's anything that they wanted to talk about, or if there were any concerns or things that they wanted the clerks to look out for, and then at the next meeting, they would prepare us a draft based on our policy, and then we would go from there. I'm looking to see if we need to change anything, or add anything, or take anything away. So just wanted to see if there were any initial thoughts. Dr. Duvva, any thoughts on school committee?
Right here.
I'll publicly say I think Tuesdays are yucky, but, like, it's hard, Tuesdays are hard because of the agendas, and when they have to be posted and stuff, but I don't know if we, when we dig into it, I don't know if there would be a better day, but just wanted to, like, that's really difficult, because then you're backed up with the weekends, with the Fridays and whatnot, so, that's something that I was thinking about, but I also don't know if changing it massively is-
Hope you just always had it on Tuesday. Is that, like-
I respectfully have no-
I was gonna say, January.
Yeah, I mean, but that only goes back four years. The one thing that I, like, I, I understand the concern with the attendance, but that weekend gives committee members time to review the packet, and to only have 48 hours hard stop is not a lot of time to go through things.
That's valid. Any other thoughts? Another thought, and I would defer to Dr. Duvva on this, we typically don't meet in July, but the past couple of summers, we've had to add meetings, and so thinking about the end and the start, not in a bad way, but like, making sure it lines up with what you need to do for contracts and things like that, like, if you can think about that, with the job fairs and all of those sort of things, like, the meetings that we've had to add were, like, had to add, so that you could have employees, and so you could have things, and, and I'm always obviously willing to call a special meeting if needed, but if we could kind of think about how it lands, and where we can proactively put meetings, not to add more, but maybe if a week this way, or a week that way, could make a difference.
Do one meeting in July, maybe a meeting in August, like, have it on the calendar.
And even if, then if we don't need it, we could cancel it, right?
We could cancel, yeah.
So it's probably better to put it on, rather than not.
Not to, and, not necessarily, we don't have to add a July meeting, but just thinking especially about the August meetings and when they fall, like, that's where we'd love your feedback on what makes sense, and what would help you all, and then we could also look at the past couple of summers and see when we've had to meet, and try to figure out, like, what makes most sense. Any other thoughts or considerations? What night does Jamestown-
Thursdays.
They do Thursdays.
I know Jamestown waits till you guys confirm your calendar to confirm theirs, so.
Perfect.
So you're early this year.
Josh, what, you have information to report back?
All right.
No, um, okay, Thursdays. The same Thursdays as us, or is it the opposite?
Uh.
Like, do you have a meeting this week?
I have a meeting this week, yeah.
But we're off.
But we, this is rare for us, we don't usually have three in a row.
Isn't this the real meeting?
Yeah.
You're usually the first and third.
Yeah. This is the third?
Yeah, because next, next one's the fourth.
Jamestown was, I think, the second and the fourth.
Yeah.
You were the second and the fourth, then you switched to the first and third.
Okay. Great. All right, anything else on that?
Nope.
All right, so we'll have our clerk, and clerks, good to our friends, we'll, we'll draft that, and then we'll start, we'll, we'll have that for next meeting, and see what we do. Okay, moving on to-
D.
I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to discuss.
Give a second.
Okay. Megan, since you introduced us, and you want to speak as well?
Sure, hopefully this can be quick and simple, I-
I get, that's literally the worst thing to say, and everyone knows that.
You're just kidding.
I'm joking, I'm just kidding.
No, I'm gonna go really fast here. So Roberts rules and the requirement of a school committee member serving as co-chair, Pam actually mentioned this earlier tonight, so I don't want to go too much into detail, but let's start with the school committee member serving as co-chair. While I see that it's in the policy, I was wondering if we could make that, or if we could discuss making it optional, because, for instance, as Pam had mentioned, on the building subcommittee, I actually personally think it might be a better idea to have somebody from the town side, a town administrator, as a co-chair, along with a, an administrator from the school district versus a school committee member, since we already sit on this, on the committee, the advisory committee, will be there, and things have to get kicked back to us anyway. And I had actually said to, when we were at the redistricting meeting, there are a handful of us, a handful of community members, who I would be happy to relinquish my role as co-chair to one of them, should one of them have interest in being co-chair, along with Dr. Duvva, and I did mention at the first meeting that I'd be happy to bring the, bring this up to the school committee via the policy advisory committee. So that's, that's about, I guess I could stop there.
Can you hit on the Roberts rules part?
What's that?
Can you hit on the Roberts rules part?
Yeah, so the Roberts rules part is, just with advisory committees, I don't know if, I feel like advisory committees, there's a lot more discussion that goes on and the community members may not be as aware of the Roberts rules. And also I just feel like it would be better flowing, the ideas would be better flowing if we could potentially just not have to follow Roberts rules. I don't know if that's a thing, if other districts do that. I did speak to at the orientation on Saturday, I did speak to the special counsel for the attorney general, asked him about that. He basically said because it didn't fall under OMA that he really couldn't speak to it, but it didn't, you know, affect the OMA, it wasn't an OMA violation or anything like that or anything having to do with his wheelhouse. He did say someone was going to speak to it that afternoon and I completely forgot to ask about parliamentary stuff. But I'm just wondering where that came from, the requirement for following Roberts rules on the advisory committees and if it's really necessary.
Great, okay, other discussion?
I would almost think on the Robert rules that it is, because even like a PTO meeting, you need to do Roberts rules of order. Like not as like, I'll say we do it more official in the school committee.
I'm not gonna say we do, we don't, we don't do it perfect either, even here.
Right, but I'm saying, and I'm gonna say the PTOs, I don't think do it perfect, but I think it's just sort of an easier way to run a meeting sometimes. But I know, so I think that's why a lot of times they do use Robert rules. I don't know though, like answer if you're supposed to or you're not.
I I mean, like, I I think technically we follow them because we adjourn the meeting, we close the meeting, we post agendas and we post the meeting. But like, it's not formal, like we allow much more leeway.
Right, that's what I mean, I just.
We are, like, I don't think it says anywhere in our policy that we follow Roberts rules, does it?
It does in the, in the school committee meeting one.
In the school.
Because I remember, yeah.
I don't think it does in the advisory committee, just as advisory committees will follow open meeting laws.
Okay, I, I, for some reason I might have thought it did, but you could, you could be right, but I mean.
And it could be by practice, not by policy, you know, like people could be running them like that with, but you know, like even though it's not exactly written down because they're modeling the the school committees.
Yeah, I mean, we do motions, you know, but.
So then if it's not in the policy, then there's really probably nothing to discuss because it's not required.
Yep.
Yeah, and I think it's just if you want to run it that way, you care.
Sure, then that's fine.
And I don't think you're really.
Like, aside from like making motions to move things up and to open and close the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we did on the wellness subcommittee to go to the next thing just because I thought, you know, we're getting recorded, I thought it'd be official or even, I do try to when we start the meeting to do that.
You need a agenda to run a meeting.
Yeah, so, but I don't think you're like super strict about the Robert.
I guess what, I guess what, Megan, and and just to understand better, like what are we, what are you trying to fix? You know, like, so like, is there something that you think were, I heard the point that you were saying that like community members might not be as aware, which is totally valid. But are there other things that you think by following Roberts rules were like hindering the advisory committees, like what, or is it just that one piece of them not understanding?
Because you could definitely. I just want to make sure people don't feel like they have to be so careful with like, oh my gosh, this isn't Roberts rules and then therefore we can't talk, especially people who, you know, recent, like up until recently, I wasn't a hundred percent aware of, you know, all the ins and outs of Roberts rules just as a community member. So that's all, but if it's not in here, then you know, this is kind of a moot point. So I, apologies for bringing, it wasn't in here.
And then just to address from my perspective, the school committee as the co-chair of the advisory committees, couple of things. One, some of them are mandated by the state. So like the health and wellness one, that is not our choice who chairs that committee, that is the state of Rhode Island telling us who has to chair that committee. So that one has to be chaired by a school committee member.
Yeah, that's not what I'm talking about.
No, 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 but I was addressing, we were talking about chairs and that concern came up and I just wanted to clarify that in general, because that one is by mandate and by statute. As far as the co-chairs for having a school committee member be the co-chair, the reason why I think it's helpful is because there's a lot of logistics that go into it. And I don't want that to solely fall on the administrator and I think it's too much to ask a volunteer to have to make sure, you know, we're in compliance with getting things posted and getting the agendas done and getting the minutes done and all of those sort of logistical pieces, making sure we have quorum. So that's why I always thought like an advisory committee of the school committee should have a co-chair from the school committee. I think with Mr. Malas, that was supposed to be from from the previous superintendent, a very temporary thing. I think it was supposed to expire last two marches ago. I don't even know, it was supposed to be a very quick piece because it was unique, although I really appreciate the towns, town being on it. And so I'm not against the conversation, but just wanted you to have like at least my thoughts on why a school committee member is helpful being on it so that it doesn't completely fall on the administrative side. And then also having them be able to come back here and report out and explain kind of what happened, so. But I, I mean, I'd be open to to alternate things on that or like exceptions to that in in cases too, it could be something like that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, whatever, obviously whatever the committee decides. I think one thing that I I really did think it was important for the building subcommittee to have, I did like that there was a town administrator as a co-chair, especially because dealing with the bond stuff and the CIP stuff that has to be approved on the town side anyway, I thought that was important. But you know, if that's the way the policy is going to stand, that's the way it's going to stand. No, Aaron. I'm just saying, if we leave it that way, that's how it's going to stay.
I do see on the building subcommittee, another town that I talked to, not last Saturday, but last Friday, they actually are doing it jointly with the town council. And I think the reason, and I thought it was interesting that it said this, was so that, you know, like the school administration and school can focus on the students and all the education part, not necessarily the building part.
That one, that one also is regulated by the state, who has to be on it and and different things like that. And we do have a town council member representative on it.
So we do have someone.
Yeah, campaign is on that one.
So it was more the.
And then multiple shaft members are on it, so to try to enhance that collaboration.
Oh, okay.
Other thoughts, comments regarding this, next steps?
Can I ask a question? Can a co-chair on a committee, can like the school committee members, the chair, can a co-chair be a, you know, a member of the committee? Where then they wouldn't, you know, they wouldn't be the ones in charge of the minutes in the agenda, but if they wanted to help.
I think the way the policy is written.
It's with a member of the administration because you need somebody on the inside to handle all the inside stuff.
I think that's correct, the way your policy is written.
And all of them, like technically Trish is your co-chair, right?
And she technically, she works in the school department.
She's the admin.
So you can have someone like that outside of like.
It doesn't always have to be the superintendent or the assistant superintendent, it's any, or it's there to be.
Right, Dr. Santa is the co-chair on the disciplinary disciplinary committee.
Yep.
Okay.
And for advisory committees, are meeting minutes required? I believe they're recommended, not required.
So they're recommended, but in.
If we don't keep them for a while.
It's, it's more of a transparency thing to to your point, like I think it's important that if we're making official, like it's, it's the minimum ones, but who's in attendance, motions that were made, you know, I think it's just helpful for records. So I don't think it's, it's not required under OMA, I don't believe, but I I think it's good practice as far as transparency to have that public record. But again, we could talk that through.
Yeah, I mean, I like, I know for DVI and policy, we just do bare bones here, you were here, we talked about this, we don't actually, what we talked about and like we voted on this, like that's it. Like it's not like a detailed, because that's a lot to have to take.
Right.
The videos are.
The videos are it, yeah.
That's what a lot of the subcommittees rely on now is the stored videos of the actual meeting. You get better.
Well, I was kind of, I'm kind of just saying that for.
Unless you, unless you get to turn the camera on. Or the volume doesn't work or, no, you know what I mean, like I think that's, that's the, to me, it's the double check on if you, if we do have a technical error, then we have the minutes to.
Right, just at least bare bones, like.
Especially with things like the motions and stuff, like I think that that's important because making sure that we have clarity on what the advisory committee is advising us on.
Well, I just wanted to bring that up really for the public because if people say, well, you're supposed to be keeping minutes, but technically.
We all are and all of us.
Right, but like you said, not like the detailed minutes of a school committee meeting.
That's in the above, just like recording them is. We don't, we have no responsibility to livestream or post them. That's, that's our choice and in our transparency, so. Um, any other things on this? Do we want to refer it somewhere? Do we want to say that was a nice conversation and move on? You know, we're in discussion, so.
Yeah, because we don't really have anything to vote on, right?
No, if everybody, if everybody's fine with it, then then the, you know, if we want to keep it as is, that's, that's how, that's how it is. But the Roberts rules thing is fine and if the school committee member serving as co-chair is working, that's fine. I just had mentioned, I had told the subcommittee, the advisory committee that I'd bring it up, so I brought it up.
Anything else on that one for now?
Yep.
Next item on the agenda, can I get a motion?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Megan, I think this one was yours too, if you want to.
Yes, this, yeah, so I actually just wanted to discuss this because I think that it's, it's important. We also did get some correspondence on this, so it made me think that it's something that, it's a topic that I know some people in the community would like to just to have discussed as well. A member code of ethics per se, and then there is a Barrington social media policy that was added into the packet here, which again, just a very minimal draft of an idea. But I think that, I guess what I would say is that as school committee members, as advisory committee members who volunteer to work for and with students and other faculty members and and employees of our district on a volunteer basis, I think it's really important that we remember that we need to be holding ourselves to a higher standard. Just because we have First Amendment rights doesn't mean we necessarily have to go ahead and use them to an extent that could potentially come across as something that could be just not, not wonderful in our district. And you know, obviously we do all have our First Amendment rights, but I think that more and more, we need to really be self-aware of what we're putting out there, especially because now we do have so many different advisory committees that we've added and we're also adding students to these advisory committees. So I just wanted to have a discussion about, in particular, social media use, especially by, I guess the way I would describe it is, school committee members, it's important for us, but we're elected by people in our community. So the decision is made by the people in our community. The advisory committee members, the volunteers are chosen by people in the district.
At the recommendation of the superintendent?
At the recommendation of superintendent. So I guess what I'm saying is, I think people also need to be aware that if they're going to volunteer for these committees, you know, we just, there's a certain level of expected, as they say in the schools, expected behavior. And I just think it's important for all of us to consider when, and I'm sure you do consider that, when you're choosing, but I wonder if there should be something in there. And in particular, not so, with the code of ethics, let's say something does come up that you find to be something that you just no longer feel as if this person should sit on the committee anymore. I didn't see anything in place in our current policy that says that you reserve the right to. It is in there?
It is in there.
Yeah, it can remove to the discretion of the chair.
Does it say for, for any reason?
Yep.
Okay, alright, then that's, that's terrific.
I'm laughing you brought that up because I.
Yeah, let's just clear, let's just clarify that one point.
I thought I just saw that.
I'm a hundred percent positive it's in there because I remember writing it.
Yeah, I I think you raise some interesting points here and I think they are worthy of being considered and I do think that there should be something, but I think that this is a conversation with the policy advisory committee. Because I think it complements some of the other things that we've been working on and I think that it should be discussed, like who it should apply to and in what circumstances. So I would like to, as I told Ken when he asked me about this, refer it to the policy advisory committee.
Okay.
We, we have to do that, so it would be like a motion to, to, to put it there and then.
Refer it to the advisory committee? Alright, um, okay, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I guess we're still in discussion.
No, you can make a different motion and then we can have discussion on that motion if you want.
And I was gonna say, we had talked about even just sending this out maybe once a year to all of the members, just as a little.
I actually have a draft of an email to go to the advisory committee chairs and to the committee members, kind of just like outlining a lot of the different things. Because there are, there's a lot of new folks and a lot of turnover. And so I will share that with the school committee members before I send it and if they have comments, they can send them to Ken. If they want anything added or things clarified, kind of, it's not, it's not a manual, but like it's basically like ten points of like things that isn't worth to know if you're going to be a co-chair or serving to kind of help give some guidance, because there's really not a lot of documentation on the procedure.
Right, right, I think, yeah, I think that's important.
Yeah, Andrew, did you find that part?
Yeah, notwithstanding the length of the term identified, all advisory committee members serve at the discretion of the school committee. So you can remove for any non-discriminatory reasons, essentially.
Okay, thank you.
So that's that, but also I hear a willing, so if someone wants to make a motion to.
Refer it to the.
Refer it to it and you are welcome to do so.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to refer it to the policy advisory committee.
Any further discussion or things that they, we want the policy advisory committee to take into consideration? One thing that I would suggest is looking into what the town has. You know, as far as code of ethics for their employees, for people that serve on their boards or councils, like I think, I always try to remember that we're part of the town and that, you know, they're, what they have on the books already sometimes can apply to us or we can mirror it. So I would definitely recommend looking into that piece and then of course, talking to just the district attorney about kind of what, if anything, like do we have, for lack of a word, like, how do we make those calls, what happens, is there, could there be recourse, all of that sort of things? Like if someone posted something and we were like, okay, because you posted that, you can't be on this advisory committee anymore, what would, and they pushed back on that? Like, it didn't happen at a meeting, it wasn't about X, Y, Z, you know, like kind of where, where does that line get drawn and kind of what does that look like? Because I agree that there should be some level of expectation, but I also know that censorship especially is is sometimes tricky. And kind of what that looks like, we'd have to just make sure that we're even aligned with like legal stuff.
And I think to the extent that we can mimic the town or, you know, be in conjunction with what goes on with the town, then that would be, you know, it's like reinventing the wheel, I'm sure.
In a quick glance, I haven't found anything, but maybe it's, it's deep in the, the things. Does Jamestown have a code of ethics for their members?
Good question.
If you find one, let us know because we would love to see examples. Anything else regarding this item? If not, we can call a question to refer to the policy advisory committee. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then item G, can I get a motion?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Megan, I think this one was yours too, if you want to.
Sure, so I thought that it would be important for us to discuss potential RFP for a new school department law firm, just given that usually best practice is some, some districts, whenever they, school committees, whenever they have turnover, they go out for RFPs. Maybe not so often, but the last time we went out for an RFP for a law firm was August of twenty seventeen. And then we did renegotiate per se the agreement in twenty twenty-three. But given that we are a new school committee and obviously since twenty seventeen, our legal needs have changed drastically and in differing ways. I just think it's good practice. I know other districts or other school committees do this all the time. This is pretty common and I just thought it would be something that would be important for discussion.
Sure, do you have examples of what districts, I just always like to use tangible examples.
Um, yes, I reached out to, let me see, hold on. Off the top of my head, I believe it was Cherahoe. If you give me a second, I can.
I just, I just always like to look into what, what people find as far as references, so that would be, just let us know later if you can find it.
Definitely Cherahoe was one of them.
Okay, kind of just thoughts from the committee or the administration?
When does our current contract expire?
It's at will. It expires tonight. If it was on the agenda, then it would be.
You're not that lucky, Andrew, I'm sorry. If it was on the agenda.
I think, I think the other thing I wanted to add to that is that the contract or agreement per se in twenty seventeen wasn't, I, I couldn't find anywhere really where it was, I think we, we didn't ever find out who signed it on this end, the district's end.
Yeah, I only had the signed copy that you requested that I sent to you.
Right, and there was, it was really kind of just like floating out there and I.
Just why in twenty twenty-three I made us put up with paper? I'm just saying, no, like we were aware of that issue and that's why we did that in twenty twenty-three.
Right.
To make sure we had something.
Yes, but like I said, I mean, I think it's, it's obviously a school committee thing, not a, an administrative thing. So it would be something that if we thought it, you know, was something that we'd want to do, we would come up with our own.
It, it's kind of an administrative thing too, like it's a district firm, so I would want Ken's input, you know, like about the process. It's not just the school committee's attorney, it's the district's attorney, so I would want the administration involved in that conversation.
Right, because I mean, if something happened, like we're talking about earlier, you could call Andrew and we might not even know what's happened.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that they weren't really close to.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to have the administrative input.
Other thoughts on this?
What do you hope to, is it just for transparency, like what's the end goal?
Yeah, I mean, I think looking, renegotiating, seeing what's out there, see, not necessarily, has nothing to do with the law firm itself, it's more, you know, budgetary issues. Like we could, you know, rework, reworking our budget now, we know our different budgetary needs. I think obviously things might be a little bit different than they were back in twenty seventeen and even October of twenty twenty-three. You know, I, I think it's a new school committee, good to see what's out there, good to see. Good to see what's out there, good to see.
I am always down for a good RFP moment. No, I am, like I, you know, I, I'm literally the person that's like, do we do an RFP, do we do an RFP? I do have concerns about adding any, like adding things to the administration's list as far as like another process and another thing to go through. But more importantly, I have concerns about transitioning during a time where we have active things that we have historical knowledge from our current firm on. And so I'm not against the idea, but I do have that concern, because when you go out for an RFP, like I want to go, I would want to do it for real. And that would possibly mean transition. And I do think for where we are with some of our things, that it might not be the best timing.
I think budget season is, is a poor, is poor timing, I, I will-
Oh, not even budget season, like, like where we are in some processes, in some legal things, that's more my concern. And the timing for budget season is also a little tricky because you won't see that impact, but you won't be quick enough. But that's secondary concern, I'm more concerned about how we are able to service and support the administrators and district.
That's my concern, like this is not, like in my mind, like legal services are not something like buying a pair of tires, where like you want the cheapest pair and that they're going to work. Like I, I, I don't, I'm not opposed to it, but I definitely would have concerns over like looking at a piece of paper and saying, this one's five dollars, this one's ten dollars, this one's fifteen, where do you go with the five dollar one? Because you lose that historical knowledge, you lose, you know, you get what you pay for sometimes, so.
No, I, and I wasn't talking just about money, obviously you'd have to, but that's what the RFP would be, right? We would thoroughly vet, hopefully.
Cost would be a factor though, like you would give points or the administration, I'm not sure how exactly they would do it, but that would have a part of it, of course. Other thoughts?
So happy to pick up this conversation at a later time, if we want to table this and just, you know, if we're open to discussion later.
Okay, do you want to give a-
Make a motion to that?
Tie?
Or table?
I don't think we need to do that, but like I just, I want to, as chair, I want to understand like what, what later means to you, because I want to have respect to your, your request, and so is it something maybe you could revisit? Like May, June?
Yeah, I was gonna say, how about at the end of the school year?
Is that okay?
That's fine with me.
It will add it to the list. And then we can think about like the process and, and I think we'll find a time when Ken, like after, maybe after we get through everything, that we can think about what a thoughtful process would look like, et cetera. And all firms would be willing to go through the process.
Absolutely.
I'm just joking, just making fun of Andrew. Okay, anything else on this one? Okay, item H, can I get a motion for that, please?
I'll make a motion to approve this superintendent's recommendations.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, Andrew, is that motion sufficient? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then the last item, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to discuss.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I believe Miss Lee may even introduce this one, so do you want to kick us off?
Yes, so hell, it's frozen over because I'm channeling Bob Jones twice tonight's evening and I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. I'm harping back on one of his-
Listening to citizens' feedback is how we would like to address that topic.
This is old feedback, this isn't new feedback, so you know, he's been talking about this for years. But I had been doing some reading and I came across a couple of like districts of the year, superintendents of the year and like school districts of the year, and the one thing that they had in common was that they all engaged in outcome-based tutoring contracts. Granted, they did it without our money when there was like a bazillion dollars floating around. But you know, I, I think one of the things that was said in one of the articles was how common it is for wealthy families to be able to provide tutoring service for their children. And like not everybody has access to that, and our kids who are not getting it are at a disadvantage because they're not getting it. And so, you know, all of these like districts in different states and cities and towns, they also the same thing, like providing this tutoring changed the trajectory of their students' outcomes. And so I wanted to put out there the idea of an outcome-based tutoring program. I believe that the Office of Family Learning is doing a trial run with one of them on one of their products, one of their projects that they're doing called virtual tutoring. And it just coincidentally-
Oh, yeah, they just found that. I just found it, yeah.
To do it, yeah.
Wait, I'm looking for it, because I just saw it and I, and I printed it out.
It said in our FunFlyers, I think?
It was in our FunFlyers and it was-
But you know, and this is something, like I said, this is a Bob Jones thing, like it's just access to supplemental tutoring is a great resource for kids and to tie it to outcome-based where we're either paying less money or more money based on how our kids do is something I think to consider, especially as we head into budget time.
Do you have a question?
Well, because your stance coming out of Office of Family Learning, I'm trying like what they're doing that I'm not aware of.
It's, it's part, sorry, it's part of the Learn 365 program that they do.
Okay, so that's the town.
Yes.
That's the town.
The town, yeah, the Office of Family Learning.
So the town is doing something, alright, I just, when you said, because Office of Family Learning, I'm like, wait.
That's a good, that's a good, right.
We're like, what are we doing?
That makes sense, it might be part of the Learn 365 grant that the town has.
Yeah, it's part of the Learn 365 grant. But so I believe that the district has access to that in some way, shape, or form.
We would, anything that the town's doing with the Learn 365, that would get shared out to, through the community.
So, and I'm not advocating for that particular like program, I'm just saying like that is an example of a company who does like free tutoring and they also do outcome-based tutoring. And I think, you know.
So you're introducing it to the administration?
I'm introducing the, the concept for discussion.
So, so I have a question, I can't, I just flyers aggravate. So the flyer that went out in the FunFlyers, maybe we could like send it, could we send it out to the schools to put in their, their newsletter?
We could, I mean, yeah, we will, I mean, the FunFlyers go with everyone, but we could, we have to make sure that's-
Maybe just to be, because it, I, I'm laughing because I'm like, I actually printed it out, because I was like, oh, this is pretty cool.
And it sounds like it's pretty cool, like from what was described to me.
Yeah, and I think it sounds like it's online, like virtual, so it's almost like the kids could do it, you know, when it's convenient for them or parents and not, you know, like a structured-
And like I said, there's a free component to it, which I think that everybody has access to, but then they have a second layer that is a little bit more like, you know, space or-
Is it diversity tutors?
Yes.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah, that was a total coincidence, that happened to come out at the same time that I was talking about it.
By someone with your name.
By someone, I swear to God.
I'm just saying, I'll say it before they say it online.
No, 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 she just happened, I got it, it popped up on my calendar.
You sent me this way before this. Okay, so it's in the interest of time, because it's nine thirty-three and I am really optimistic about the, oh, I would like to be done before that. Dr. Duba, thoughts? So I, I hear what Jen's saying, it's an interesting concept. We obviously have some access to some online tutors, what do you think would be the next step? If, if the administration's even willing to look into this, like what do you think would be the next step?
I'd like to have some time to kind of go back and look in research and see what the companies are, because we want to be able to vet these companies before we're saying we're going to use someone and put something out there.
Oh, yeah, and I'm not, I'm gonna-
I just wanted to put it out for the special, yeah, and I can send you some of the resources that popped up in the-
Well, let Ken finish up.
Yeah, well, we can look into this and see what's out there that can be used. Look at the needs, right, and then we can go from there, yeah.
Would you mind Jen sharing like some of the research you collected on districts that have used it?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, I'll share the information that, that popped up.
Because I would be interested in that.
Yeah.
Could we set a agreed upon timeframe for when we might get information about this? Because in my head, it is not soon and I would guess Jen said it's soon, so. Like what, what would, like, you know what I mean?
I just thought, it's something to consider as we head into like, I mean, because are there free options available? Like there was something that I dug out from Bob Jones like three years ago-
Right now, I'd be, yeah, what, what do we have?
Say that for me, I'm sorry.
I, I dug out something that Bob Jones had sent out like three years ago, that, that Fall River Public Schools is doing. Like so there are a bunch of different options out there and some may be free and some might not be. But I just think the more access we can give to students to be able to do on their own outside of school or even while they're in school through PLT or whatever, I think the-
Well, we can also look to what the town's doing with the Learn 365 and how that's being used, because it's already, if there's already something happening within our town, it's just how are we communicating that out?
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, maybe just-
This is something that there's access to.
Yeah, like you said, not just the FunFlyers.
Well, I know that you get it a couple of times, it like registers more, as a, I mean, I know-
Well, if we share at the school level, right, then the teachers see it and they may have students and then be able to make those recommendations.
It's in their clever dashboards?
I haven't seen the flyer.
It says it's in their clever dashboards? Is that us? Okay. Okay, so it sounds like the administration's going to look into what is going on for Learn 365. And then, Ken, would it be reasonable to have you or Rob or someone come back to us or Jody, maybe like in a March, April meeting to give a report back in kind of what you've learned and what you think from an administrative standpoint?
I can, I can do that for that.
Is that too far, Jen? Like it's not, like it's not going to hit for budget, like this-
No, 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 that's fine, I just wanted to start the discussion.
So maybe circle back March, April?
Yeah, that's good.
And what's being offered at the town level?
Circle back March, April.
I can, I can come up with that.
Okay, just say yes to the long runway and then if you're ready earlier, we will welcome it. But I just, I'm thinking with budget and whatnot, like I think it's a good thing to look into, but I also don't want to add too much. But also, I do think to Jen's point, like with some of the targeted goals that we have for like increasing in certain standardized tests or even listening to what Jody was talking about, like that could be an approach to, to trying to work through some of those goals. So I do see it aligned to what we've been talking about and is an interesting concept, especially because the town stuff just-
I'll send you that stuff, Rob.
Thank you.
And if anyone else sees anything else, feel free to send it. If James Town's doing anything cool, we're always interested in what they've done since Ken left.
And I will say, I don't know if Whitford does, but DMS has like homework club, which isn't tutoring, but I think it's similar like to when kids need help to go and do stuff.
Yeah, WMS has that too.
Yeah, so I feel like that's, okay.
There's a lot of-
Things that I feel like are secretive that maybe not everyone knows unless you're at the school.
It's more like a parental education issue too.
Yeah, no, it's true, like I, I, you know, you wouldn't know it's actually there unless your kids are once they're at the school.
Okay, so I'll add that to our list to get some information later in the spring. Anything else on that topic?
Thank you.
Okay, and then correspondence?
Okay, so before I start correspondence, I'm just going to say that Matt McCoy's been sending daily emails about the legislator and I appreciate you, Matt, but I'm not going to read them out every day.
So we generally get about Mr. McCoy sending information to the school committee emails.
He sent us a lot of information.
So January sixteenth, Brittany Cochio regarding meeting link, January sixteenth, Cara Martone regarding professional development for North Keats Town School Department, and those are the non-Matt McCoy related correspondence.
Thank you, and thank you to our town councillor for keeping us informed about what's going on at the state level. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Can you send that out to Johnny please?
Can you send that to Johnny please?